Good evening and welcome. This is a special meeting of the Princeton Planning Board on Tuesday, June 25, 2024. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this special meeting has been given by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton on the 10th day of June 2024. Notice of this meeting has been posted to the municipal website, princetonnj.gov/calender. Notice that all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Planning Board will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet and the Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on Friday, January 12, 2024. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. During hearings on applications for development, members of the public will have an opportunity to comment and ask questions. Questions may be asked after an applicant's witnesses have testified. Public comment is heard by the board after an applicant's representatives have finished their presentations and have been questioned by planning board members and staff. Those wishing to comment orally should virtually raise your hand by clicking on the reactions or raise hand icon at the bottom of your Zoom screen, or if participating by phone, by pressing star nine. Oral comments will be taken in the order in which hands were raised. We ask with respect that members of the public express your views in three minutes or less. We'll have a countdown clock to help speakers keep track of time. Please note that speakers who exceed three minutes will be interrupted. Inappropriate public comment containing obscenity, hate speech, or relating to matters not before the board will be muted. Will you call the roll, Carrie?
Mr. Bodikheimer?
Here.
Zoli?
I'm here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. McGowan?
Here.
Ms. Nuka?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Ms. Perlmutter?
Here.
Ms. Sacks? Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Ms. Wilson Anderson?
Here.
Mrs. Wilson?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, good. Are there any announcements since last Thursday? I don't have any myself. Any announcements from staff or other board members? Okay. No subcommittee reports tonight? Oh, excuse me, Julie, please, yeah.
We had a landscape subcommittee meeting yesterday, and we reviewed Galaxy Tile, which is 820 State Road. We also reviewed West Windsor Real Estate, 176, 182, and 188 Baird Lane, and we approved both landscaping plans with minor modifications.
Yes, I was even there and still did not think about the fact there would be a report, so thank you for that. Any other committee reports? I don't think so. Okay. We have two applications before us tonight. The first is from the trustees of Princeton University. This is a minor site plan with variances at 112, 114, and in Prospect Avenue, block 3501, lot 8, and block 3601, lot 1. This is file number P2424-449PD.
Madam Chair, we were not able to take jurisdiction at the earlier meeting because of that glitch. They did renotice. The notice was proper with a publication and service. Wasn't ordered, as I understand it, and if you could confirm that, Carrie?
That is correct.
Okay, and therefore the board has jurisdiction.
Also, we have two members that are recused from a university action, so if you can step away until the other application begins, that would be wonderful. Do you want me to move you over to panelists?
Yes, please, if you would do that, Carrie.
I will do that.
Bodikheimer.
I mean.
Ms. Nuka, is that correct? Yeah. Also, I understand that Mia needs to be sent an updated link. She has clicked on a link that is not working for her.
I've just forwarded mine.
Great, thank you. All right, so let's wait just a minute or two for Council President Sacks to join us. I'm sure it'll be quick. And then I'll ask Justin to give us a quick overview before we turn things over to Mr. DeGrazia and Mr. McCoy. Just to fill time, I will let folks who are attendees tonight know that there are 19 people attending tonight who are not panelists. I expect a lot of them might be interested in the second application tonight, but who knows, maybe you're interested in both, but there are 19 of you.
Madam Chair, the 19 include our two board members.
Ah, 17. Thanks. There we go. Go ahead, Justin.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, members of the board, members of the public. I think, Jerry, you need to swear again?
Yeah, if you can raise your right hand. And Derek and Dan here also?
Yes, and Elizabeth Kim, I believe, as well, if you'd like to swear her in.
Yes, if all four of you can raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that testimony about to give will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
So that's one affirmed, and if the other three can so indicate?
I do.
I do.
I do. I just can't get my video on, sorry.
Okay. Thank you.
So I'd like to share my screen, Madam Chair, just to orient us to the site. It's a site that members of the board and members of the public should probably know well by now. I'm using the publicly available NJ Partial Explorer from Rowan University. The application, this first application, is for minor site plan approval with a variance request. It was classified as minor by the Site Plan Committee in early June. The subject property is on Prospect Ave, more or less where you see these blue highlights. Note that these lot lines don't truly exist. The subject area is on one large university parcel. The Prospect Avenue Apartments are adjacent to the east, and they are on their own lot, and other university uses are on the other three sides. And by university, I mean Princeton University, if I didn't make that clear. You may remember the companion applications that were approved in 2021 by this board to relocate the building. Excuse me. To relocate the building at 91 Prospect Avenue, across the street to allow for the development of the 666,000 square foot ESNCs complex, mostly on Ivy Lane, but with a portion known as the Theorist Pavilion, fronting on Prospect Avenue where the Court Club Building previously stood. Note that this aerial photo is older. I'm sure the university will show where the buildings have moved. You know, if you went out there recently. The university has a presentation about these previous approvals, as well as what they're proposing in this application, so I'll defer to them at this point. I'm happy to answer any questions after their presentation and address the comments from my May 31 report if the university did not do so in their presentation. Mr. Bridger and Mr. Weissman are here with their engineering and zoning report. I believe Mr. Dobremilski is here to speak to his landscape architectural plan review as well. And Ms. Kim is here, as well as Member Capizoli, to discuss the Historic Preservation Commission's memo from their May review.
And let's mark what you have on the screen is Exhibit PB1.
Okay, thanks, Justin. I think now we'll turn to Mr. DeGrazia and Mr. McCoy. I trust there are no issues that staff want to bring to our attention before the applicant makes their presentation. That's my understanding, but yeah, not seeing any hands up. Okay, good. Go ahead, Mr. DeGrazia. Welcome back.
Can you hear me okay?
Excuse me?
Oh, boy. Let me see something here. Sorry about that. I've been having a little problem with my... Let me change it to something different. How's that?
Better.
Okay. Okay, thank you. For the record, my name is Christopher DeGrazia from the law firm of Fageri, Drinker, Biddle, and Reath, here on behalf of the applicant trustees of Princeton University. As Mr. Lesko said, tonight's application is a minor site plan application that involves the rehabilitation of three buildings that are located on the north side of Prospect Avenue. In connection with the minor site plan, we're requesting a variance that's related to the construction of an accessibility ramp. The building itself, Building 116 Prospect, is actually located within a side yard setback. So when we add the ADA ramp, we have to request a variance because it connects to that building in the side setback area. I will point out that we aren't increasing the deviation in any way. That the side of the building is 11 feet in or so, and our ramp is a few feet further, about 14 feet, 3 inches into the property. So it's not increasing the deviation in any way. As Mr. Lesko indicated, there's a history of this site. In October, we were here and received a site plan that allowed us to relocate one of the buildings to the rear. That's Building 112 Prospect. It was originally known as 110 Prospect. At that time, we got site plan approval to allow the scheme that you're about to see where all the three buildings are. The reason why we're back before you again is because the university wanted to add some additional features and enhancements to the site, such as the accessibility ramp. The university likes to add another rain garden. We will be proposing to convert some of the existing walkways to porous walkways, taking an asphalt walk, making it a blue stone walk, and removing some of the walkways that we don't need, that were previously approved, so that we can decrease some of the impervious coverage on the property that's not really needed. I would like to mention that it is within the local Prospect Avenue Historic District, so we did appear before the Historic Preservation Commission to talk about our rehabilitation, which meets the interior and exterior standards for the Secretary Interior Standards for Treatment of Historic Properties. I know that's a mouthful, but we received a very... The application was very well received, and I think with our the presentation, you're about to see that there's a lot of care and research that has gone into this restoration plan. It was enthusiastically endorsed and recommended for approval by the Historic Preservation Commission. And with that introduction, I would like to bring up our first witness, university architect Ron McCoy, and I guess have him sworn in.
Yep, Ron. Chris, do you have anybody else?
Yeah, I think we could bring up our team. We have another architect, project manager, and also our landscape architect.
Okay, if you could all raise your right hand and swear.
Activate your cameras, yeah.
Yeah.
And, oh, I'm sorry, our civil engineers here as well, Tom O'Shea.
Okay, and do you swear or affirm testimony about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Okay, if you could go around, state your full name and spell your last name.
Ron McCoy, university architect, M C C O Y.
Other people here?
Yes.
McCoy, why don't you call on your team or?
Stone, why don't you go next?
Ashram, my name is Stone Bescho, B E S S H O.
Stephanie?
Stephanie Valentine with AOS Architects. It's V A L E N T I N E.
Tom?
Tom O'Shea, civil engineer, O apostrophe S H E A.
And we also have our project manager, Martha.
My video is not able, so I can't show myself, but I am here.
And spell your name.
D apostrophe capital A, V I L A.
Okay.
Yeah, are you a civil engineer also?
I am an architect.
An architect, okay. Thank you.
I think my first witness will be university architect Ron McCoy, who will take us through our prepared presentation. I'd like to have him qualified. I know he's been... Ron, can you give us a brief history of your experience and education?
I'm an architect licensed in New Jersey and other states of the country. I have a master's architecture degree from Princeton University. I'm a fellow in the AIA, and I think that does it.
We accept your qualifications. Thank you.
Thank you. We did submit previously, I think it's a 34-slide presentation or something to that effect. I'd like to mark that as Exhibit A1, and we'll identify the slides as we go through it. Okay, Jerry?
Yep, that's fine.
Okay, great.
Okay, let's get started. Let me shut my screen. You can see this?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. Okay, this is slide number one, just to maybe summarize a few things that have already been said by Mr. Lesko and Mr. DeGrazia. These buildings were previously approved in the site plan application for the ESNCs project, and we are coming here to talk about some minor adjustments and modest improvements that we've made to the plans, and most specifically is the request for the variance for the location of the accessible ramp at 116 Prospect. That building will be used for offices, and we want to make the first floor of that accessible, and so it requires the accessible ramp. Now I'm on slide two. This is just generally the agenda. We're going to talk a little bit about the campus context, the value proposition for this project, some of the more detailed descriptions of the site and the buildings, and we'll touch on sustainability. Slide three, the value proposition, really follows the reflects the conditions of approval for the project, which has to do with the renovation of the Queen Anne Buildings on the site and rehabilitating them in a manner that's consistent with the Secretary of Interior Standards. So that's our goal. Slide four, there are two slides here, two images of the site, side by side. The one on the left was the condition prior to the 2023 relocation of 110. The slide on the right shows the relocation of 110 and the re-numeration of 110. It graduated to 112, and it sits between 114 and 116 on Prospect. Slide five, this is a diagram of the Prospect Avenue Historic District, the local district, with the boundary shown here. As noted in staff comments, we've engaged a team led by Moser Snoring to submit an application to SHPO to include these in the state historic district. That work is still ongoing, and we don't have any update to provide tonight. One little detail I would note is that we restored the Ferris Thompson Gate, which is on this street, and the gate was done to a standard that merited a gold medal for restoration from the National Ornamental and Miscellaneous Metals Association in 2024. So we did a good job with that, I think. I disagree. Slide six, so this is a bit of a summary of some of the key conditions on the site. This one shows the proposed site with 112, 114, and 116 relocated. Some of the landscaping was previously approved in the relocation during the previous application, and some of the changes are listed here. The concept is to continue the street landscape strategy that we had talked about in previous applications, in particular, the low hedge along Prospect Avenue, which picks up the tradition of the low hedge. There is a walkway to 116, which is bluestone and will be reset. There is a walkway to 114, which is currently asphalt and will be upgraded to bluestone. There are some low-balled lightings along these pathways that will not cause issues with surrounding buildings. They will design their dark sky technology compliant. And the ramp to 116 at the northeast corner, that will show that more in detail on some of the upcoming slides. This is the previous, slide seven. This is the previous plan, just for reference in case we need it. And slide eight, this is a summary of the modifications. So you see here, the blue that goes to west of 114 is the existing pathway that will be modified. You'll see a new rain garden at the southwest corner of the site for 114. You'll see the new work for the accessible ramp at the northeast corner of 116. You'll see some new trees planted between 114 and 116. Those are really to provide some privacy between the business use at 116 and the residential use at 114. You'll also see some bits of low screening planting at the corners of some of the buildings, 112, 114, 116, and around the location for the trash bins, which are on that curved road north of 112. Those are all to provide just visual screening to those particular air conditioning condensers. And then you'll see some in the yellow color, which were previously approved but are not being constructed, and so there's a slight impervious credit to that. And Tom O'Shea can answer any questions around that. Okay, so that's...
Ron, you mentioned... Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
You mentioned the plantings between 114 and 116. In the HPC comment report, they mentioned to see if we could shift it slightly, a little bit one way or the other, to kind of open up that view, and that's something that we're willing to do, correct?
Yeah, yes, we're going to do that. We're going to slide a little bit closer to 116, not too close, so 116 doesn't feel sort of... It still has daylight into that western elevation, but that will open up a little bit of a vista between 114 and that grouping of trees, with which we agree is a good thing to be able to see that house from Prospect Avenue.
Thank you. And their other comment was with the private hedge to be maintained at a height of three feet, and I assume you have no objection to that.
That's right. We will do that. That's correct.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Slide 10, slide nine. This is the vehicular circulation on the site. We've added a couple additional ADA parking in the shared parking, which is at the northern end of the site, behind 112, 114, 116, and also behind 120, and the relocated 91 Prospect. You'll see there, this is really showing the movement along east and west on Prospect Avenue, north and south along the road that provides access to the parking garage to the west of the site, and then in the northern part of the site. And it, there's a bit of a squiggle here, the very far northern part of the site. That's a fire lane that has to be maintained and gives access to the backside of our building there, between the backside of that house along Prospect, on Murray Place. All right, slide 10 shows the pedestrian circulation. It does show the ADA routes in blue. We were able to use the grades to our advantage to get access to 112. We were not able to use the grades to our advantage to get access to 116, therefore, that request for the accessibility ramp on the northeast corner of 116. There are pathways that cross across the site from between the parking lot on the north and Prospect Avenue on the south. And then the main east-west pedestrian path is on the north side of the parking lot that connects the Murray Place neighborhood over to the campuses continues across the northern side of the parking garage through the Amminger Center and over to Olden Street. There are some stairs that are shown on the site plan, as well as some of the entrances to the buildings, particularly 114. Okay, now, next slide is slide 11. This one shows the... I'm going to summarize some of those landscaping strategies, and I'm going to turn it over to Stomo, who will present the sort of landscape strategy for the site. So I just wanted to point out that three replacement trees are required by the ordinance, and that there has been one 32-inch DBH tree requiring replacement at the location of the accessible ramp that we've talked about. There is another tree here labeled 251 on the slide. That was a tree that had died prior to this application and had been removed prior to this application. But we are providing 19 new trees, although only seven are required by the ordinance. Now, slide 12 shows the different types of trees, and maybe I should let Stone jump in here and describe the types of trees. So if you can take it from here through slide 17, and just ask me to change the slides, and I'll do that for you.
Sure. So slide 12, this is the summary of the proposed tree and shrub planting, so...
Chris, excuse me for interrupting. I think we need to qualify you.
Yeah. So my name is Stombech. I'm a director of the Field Operations Landscape Architecture Firm based in New York. I have a Master of Landscape Architecture from University of Pennsylvania. I've been practicing landscape architecture over 18 years, and I'm registered in New Jersey, as well as in Pennsylvania.
Thank you very much. We accept your qualifications.
Thank you. So going back to the slide 12, this is the summary of the proposed tree and shrub planting. As Ron just mentioned, we are proposing 19 trees along with the 52 shrubs. And most of the trees are on both sides of the building, 112, to provide buffer for the building, as well as define the edge of the site. And a few trees are proposed between the building 114 and building 116, again, to provide a buffer between two buildings. And the proposed shrub planting with screen, the trash bins in back of the site with bayberry, and then a new edgeback structure outside of each building with the inkberry and the gosse. And last tree, again, you know, as Ron mentioned, we are proposing four street trees, which are eastern, the red bud and private hedge to continually the Prospect Avenue street scape character. Next, please, Ron. Slide 13, showing the proposed tree and shrub pallet, including the yellow wood and canopy tree, and a few flowering species such as the red bud and sweet bay magnolia and cornefer, including the holy and quads spruce, and then also the different types of the shrubs, mainly for the screening and the hedge in front of the site. Next, please. Slide 14, moving on to the ground cover planting. So the area around the building 112 will be planted with ground cover plants, which is the continuation of the landscape from the adjacent site in west. And the front of the site will be long flowing other properties landscape along the Prospect Avenue, except for the the rain garden proposed at the southwest corner of the building one fourteen, which will be planted with ground cover plants. Next, please. Slide fifteen. Yes, showing the proposed ground cover plant in pilot. So we choose the grasses and perennials that are relatively easy to maintain, but at the same time, something you know that can provide seasonal interest to the flowers and foliage. Next, please, slide sixteen. So this slide is showing a summary of the proposed site materials and elements the Ron discussed earlier. So the walkway to both building one fourteen and one sixteen will be paved with bluestone. And the paths running along the west edge of the site will be porous asphalt for stormwater management, which Tom will discuss in a bit. And the mailbox is proposed at the northwest corner of the site to serve all the three buildings. And lastly, a part of the path will be lit with ballad lights for safety, which are shown as the small red dots. Next, please, next. Yeah, next one is true. Yeah.
Yes, so Tom O'Shea, can you jump in and be qualified here?
Yep. Tom, can you tell us your education and your licensing?
I have a BS in civil engineering from Lehigh University. I've had my professional engineering license in the state of New Jersey since nineteen eighty-five. And I've presented before this board previously.
Thanks, Mr. O'Shea. We accept your qualifications.
Thank you. The stormwater management, and Ron went over it quickly. The the concept was that certain impervious surfaces were removed. For example, at one twelve, the amber colored walkways were removed from the site. The purple color at the rear of one fourteen was removed. We have bluestone pavement from Prospect up to both one fourteen and one sixteen. And one of the major strategies is that the net increase in impervious surface for this site was sixty-two square feet. That is tantamount to about forty percent of one parking space. So keep in mind sixty-two square feet. We have the rain garden that's located in the southwest portion of building one fourteen. That provides six hundred and twenty-six cubic feet of storage and treatment. And then the other big thing that we did out here is the existing standard bituminous pavement is being replaced with porous pavement and stone storage on that, and we're providing five hundred and eighty-two square feet of porous pavement, which both these strategies for the minor increase in impervious surface well exceeds the requirement. Is there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Above and beyond is most always good. Thank you, Tom.
Right.
Welcome.
Moving on to slide eighteen, for the next couple of slides, we'll talk about the side yard variance. As I think has been summarized, there is a twenty-five foot side yard variance required on the east side of the of the site. The existing building at one sixteen currently has a eleven eleven foot three setback. And so as Christopher summarized, we're requesting relief to allow for the setback of the accessible ramp at fourteen feet, two inches, which does not increase the degree of noncompliance of the site. So the MLUL states that a bulk variance variance maybe we're granted if the board finds that the purpose of the MLUL would be advanced by granting the variance and that the benefits of the bulk variance relief would be substantially outweighed by any detriment. We believe the benefits are to support the rehabilitation of the of the houses to enable access and equity for for different able users to the buildings and to support the street state's character because the ramp at one sixteen will not be visible from the street. So that's that goes to supporting the desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangement. Granting the various branch request would not create a substantial detriment. As we've said, the existing house is already located within the setback. The proposed ramp is further away from the existing property line, and the proposed ramp is not visible from Prospect Avenue. We can certainly talk about this more in discussion. Slide nineteen, I think summarizes some of those same points, but it 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 shows the 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 highlights the location of that ramp at the northeast corner of the site. And it states that it will not extend beyond the existing facade of the building, particularly on the toward the toward the east. And it allows us to really work with the existing house circa eighteen eighties and maintain as much as possible the intact character of that Victorian housing. This is a slide twenty. This is a detail of the ramp in that northwest corner. You'll see that there are a set of stairs that come up to the north. And then the ramp sits to the a little bit to the east of that with one switchback and provides access to a vestibule at the backside of the house, which then enters into the kitchen part of the house. This is to remind you, this is being for offices, but this is still the the kitchen is still desirable in that space. Slide twenty-one shows elevations of the ramp on the left is the east elevation that shows the the grade from the north sloping back and and returning to that porch that I talked about. You'll notice there's a slight concrete foundation, obviously, to protect the wood rot at where the where the ramp meets the ground. So it's a wooden ramp that sits on a slight triangle of concrete. And to the west of to the south of that is a lattice that is also screened to prevent rodent or insect entrance below that ramp. And then the image on the right is the northern elevation of the house. It simply shows the same conditions, but it does show how the ramp sits away from the the far eastern side of the property and the street beyond. So now on slide, next few slides, I'm going to talk a little bit about the enhancements to the the architecture. And these are summarized by the report from the Historic Preservation Commission. In general, we're doing everything we can to comply with the, we are complying with the Secretary of Interior Standards for Historic Places. Slide twenty-three gives a strategy, some of the strategies that we're employing here to comply with those standards. We're retaining as much exterior historic fabric as possible. Where new alterations are required, they will be reversible, so they can be removed in the future without damage to that historical fabric. We will recreate missing elements where we know the information, but we will not recreate them where we do it where they're based on conjecture. We will remove previous inappropriate interventions. We will restore the character defining elements and features at each house. And we will install window inserts that retain the historic fabric, but are also reversible. Those are for thermal performance and sustainability goals. And we will use historically appropriate paint colors and and direction from reference materials of the period. Those are the strategies. Slide twenty-four is a shows a plan, the the different plans of one twelve Prospect. This will be converted to five different apartments. The accessible first floor is made possible by this ramp that sneaks in along the southwest corner of the building and comes up to the entry porch and enters the building and allows the first floor of these of these units of the of the building with two units, one to the west and one to the east to be accessible. The other levels are not accessible, but we get we get accessible units at the ground level. The the slide twenty-five shows some of the elevations, the south and the north elevations. I'll just summarize some of the key modifications. We went through these in detail with the Historic Preservation Commission. But the street facade is largely unchanged. Doors will be painted white to match the early photographs instead of the current stain. Chimney caps will be added, but they're low profile and will not have any visual impact. An exhaust fan will be added to the upper flat roof. You can see it right here, but it's set back from the edge of the roof. It would not be visible on the street. And a new bronze railing will be added at the middle of steps to comply with code. And pretty similar strategies on the north elevation. On the western east elevation is now on slide twenty-six. Nonhistoric sash will be removed and new windows are to be installed that will match the original mountain patterns. A side door and steps will be eliminated, and new windows will be installed to match the adjacent windows. Two new, two existing double hung windows will be converted into casement windows for egress and fire escape code requirements. And the mountain pattern on those windows will replicate those of the double hung window. Slide twenty-seven shows the plans of one fourteen Prospect. This is also two different apartments, one on each floor. And slide twenty-eight, I'll summarize again some of the key strategies and features of the of the renovation. The modifications include a front porch and railing, which is deteriorated, will be rebuilt to match the existing because we know those conditions. The porch was reconstructed in the nineteen eighties. The original front door will be restored. We have evidence of that there were pentles on all the windows, but shutters only existed on the front. And this is demonstrated from a nineteen eleven photo that showed when all the windows that had shutters. So we're adding back shutters to all the windows. Again, a chimney cap will be added. And similar to the other house, it'll be a low profile and not have a visual impact. Slide nineteen shows the north and west elevations. And you'll see finish the same strategies and the historic colors that we're using for this building. Slide thirty goes the poor plans of one sixteen Prospect. As we mentioned, this will be used for offices and will have the ground floor accessible. The the bay window has here on slide thirty-one now shows the south elevation on the left, which has the bay window and the east elevation. That day window has currently non-matching double hung windows. These will be replaced with casement windows to match the catalog image for the building. Existing modern door will be replaced and a new door will be similar to the catalog image. On the side elevation, east elevation, the side porch was enclosed, and the second story has been added at an unknown time. And the report, the rear porch was enclosed also at an unknown time. And again, you see the historic color strategy for the building. Slide thirty-two shows the north and west elevations of one sixteen Prospect. Again, the nonoriginal windows with mutton patterns will be replaced with new insert windows with mutton patterns that match the original. And then slide thirty-three, just as a summary of some of our sustainability strategies. New porous pavements as discussed, insulating the exterior envelope, the new adding the new window inserts, new high efficiency plumbing fixtures, high efficiency mechanical systems, and the landscape strategies, including rain gardens and stormwater management techniques. That brings us to slide thirty-four, which is the end of our presentation. I'm gonna stop sharing, and then we'll be happy to have discussion and answer any questions, and I can pull up any any of the slides that you're interested in.
Thanks very much, Ron McCoy. David Cohen?
Yeah, thanks. A very complete presentation. I think the only thing that I took note of that was in staff reports that you did not address. I believe Dan Dobramilsky suggested there might be some concern about the multi-trunk red bud species selection for the street trees. And I'd like to hear your thinking about that.
I think, yes, I think there was some discrepancy between what was shown on the draw. If you look at the drawing, it'll show a multi multi trunk tree. So Dan was very accurate in reading the drawing and seeing that we're multi multi trunk, multi trunks. But if you look at the specifications, it's a single trunk tree. So it will be a single trunk red bug, red bud, and not a multi trunk red bud.
Great. Thank you.
Good. Yeah, thank you for that. I had a quick question about, I guess this is for Mr. Bescho or or any of you. Do you install irrigation systems? I just, you know, was noticing some of the plantings, particularly the cardinal flower caught my eye, and I know they don't like to get super dry and just wonder, you know, given circumstances in the world today, whether you have drip drip system or something like that that you typically install with.
Right. I think it depends on the scale of the project. So for this project, we didn't include irrigation just because it's really very small. You know, I mean, compared to other projects, like, for example, USNCs. So we don't have a permanent irrigation system, but we have actually a one-year landscape maintenance contract with the contractor. So they're supposed to maintain, you know, all those plants at least for one year. And then, you know, after one year, the plants will probably establish. So, you know, I mean, you may still need the water manure. But we don't think this site requires the permanent irrigation system.
And is that, actually, now that I'm thinking of it, is the cardinal flower spec for the rain garden? Is it one of the rain garden plants? Okay, that, all right, got it.
Yep.
Also had a question about a power and electricity for the buildings. Are these being, are these running off of the university's geothermal system, or do you have separate electric and gas hookups? Just asking out of curiosity.
These are not connected to the geexchange system. These these are independent homes. Yeah, so they're all they're off that system.
Okay.
It would have been a very heroic effort to bring the utilities all the way underground across the street for these small bits of houses.
Well, we know from other activity associated with this that you're fully capable of heroic effort. Not that I'm suggesting that 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 should have been one of them. I did watch the court club move across the street, and it was super, super interesting and fun and impressive. And so, yeah.
Thank you.
Heroic. One one might call it heroic.
We 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 choose our moments of heroism carefully.
Other questions from from board members or staff or any other comments from from staff? Or from Julie Capizoli on behalf of HPC? Julie?
Yeah. I just wanted to say, I think Elizabeth is here too, that we were extremely pleased with the presentation. We were there in person, so we were able to see paint samples, and we were able to see all kinds of samples that were brought to the meeting. Very, very enthusiastic about this work being done, very appreciative. And, yeah, the concern was the landscaping is beautiful, but just a concern not to obscure the view of one twelve in the back since it's such a gem.
Sorry. With the were changes made in order to respond to that concern or request?
That, yeah, we, that's the the point that Christopher asked us to touch on earlier, that we we will move those trees closer to the east, closer to the one sixteen property. Close enough that we're not obscuring or blocking important daylight, but just enough to open up the view corridor a bit more from Prospect Avenue to the back of the site to see one one ten, one twelve, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, it was. It was really good to see Julie, the the recommendation from HPC because it was was so enthusiastic and, you know, those are those are fun to read. Ms. Kim, Elizabeth Kim?
Yes, so just to chime in on Julie's comment, I think that HPC was really excited to see this application because their design team did an excellent job. You know, they presented all the samples, all the material, all of the analysis. They filed the Secretary of Interior Standards. They did a historic paint analysis, which was great to hear about and to read about. And they were able to find the 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 sample of the the house that they.
Catalog.
To, yes, they were. that they to, yes, they were able to restore some of the original penetrations. You know, and so they, they had something to fall back on as far as what they were able to replicate and retain and preserve. But all their work for replacement in kind and appropriate installation of inserts, which was going to retain the original framing. That was really appreciated by HPC and they would love if there were more applications like this to make their work easy. So we really thank the university for their efforts on this.
Thank you. Thanks, Ms. Kim. Ms. Capizoli?
Oh yeah, I just wanted to, hopefully we'll get to public comment. I think Clifford Zink is in the public and he attended our meeting. He had some great comments as well.
Yes, I, I, we, we, it's a great segue to public comment. If other board members don't have questions, Mr. Lesko and then Mr. Weissman?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to address two comments from the staff reports. The first is from Mr. Dobremilsky's report and he's not able to be here tonight. But his first comment was regarding the new utility improvements and some trenching that might need to happen. And he ultimately recommended having a meeting with staff if this is approved to review potential conflicts at the site. So I know we're not at conditions yet, but wanted to see the university's thoughts on that.
Yes, and I think what we can say is that we could show on the plans our tree protection, which wasn't shown. So that may resolve some of the questions that he had with the conflicts. So the plans itself didn't show our tree protection plan. And I think that's going to go a long way to, you know, avoid some conflicts.
But Christopher, does, does the university object to what Dan was suggesting in terms of an onsite review and modifications as necessary?
No.
That was just.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Excellent. So, and then just a second one was from my report. You mentioned earlier the condition of approval from the first go around regarding submitting an application to the State Historic Preservation Office for the state and national register, and that was ongoing. So the other comment I had was the condition related to submitting the names of Erwin Panofsky and Oliver Strunk to the Princeton University Committee on Naming for plaques on the houses that they lived in. It was noted though, in that application that that's obviously with, the university has ultimate discretion over that. So I just wanted to see where the, what the status is of that.
So.
Go ahead, Christopher.
I was just gonna say I can confirm from the design team that the recommendation or the request to acknowledge the residents there was referred to the Committee on Naming. Recommendations from the committee go directly from the committee to the Board of Trustees. And any, whether it's this plaque or any other naming would be announced by the Board of Trustees. So we did meet our obligation to make that referral. And now the process is between the committee and the Board of Trustees.
Thank you.
Great. Dan Weissman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just, just one comment. We had a request to replace the entire sidewalk along the Prospect Avenue frontage due to the utility connections. There's multiple being made. And the, the request is basically take it along the entire lot frontage to, to meet the ninety one Prospect Avenue sidewalk relocation.
And then that set forth in your section four, in Derek's four point oh. Jay, the staff comment. So that should be a condition, at least you're recommending.
That would be the recommendation. I was wondering if.
Any objection?
No objection on behalf of the applicant.
Okay. And then just the, the other conditions you're recommending are set forth in six point oh, this additional staff comments. One, two, what about three? Three as well? Or has that been resolved?
If three can be incorporated, it's, it's more just informational.
Okay. And Christopher, any objection?
No objection. I did. Jerry, I, I did want to make a, a one other request because timing is sensitive and we would like to get moving on some of the work that we, that the board, if they're so inclined to approve. Also consider early start, our early start requests here as they've done in other application. One would deal with, you know, some of the items on the site like utility work, interior demo and and interior framing, which you really don't need to get before the zoning board. But we would like to get started as soon as possible. So we would like to work first with staff to determine what early start work we can do immediately.
Okay. And be you sign which that we used in approval.
Yes, yeah, it would be subject, I think the way you worded is subject to the review of the land use then, review of the land use engineer.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
And any issues with that?
No, no issues.
Okay, I'm sure we'll have members of the public who wish to share some thoughts. I want to again thank the Historic Preservation Commission, the staff. And assorted local experts and stakeholders whose work on this was just absolutely critical. And so with that, I would ask that if there are members of the public who wish to speak. Now is the time to raise your hand. I believe that Carrie might already be bringing over Mr. Zink?
Yes.
Anyway, I see at least one other hand go up, two, three. So now's the time to raise your hand and we'll take, we'll bring people over, order over, excuse me, in the order in which hands are raised. And we will swear you in and then start the, the clock after you've been sworn in. Welcome, Mr. Zink.
Thank you.
Clifford, if you can raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So I swear or affirm.
Thank you. Congratulations to Ron and everyone on your team. This has really turned out to be an exemplary project. The exterior rehab following the Secretary of the Interior Standards. Including the team's research on the old catalog of what the building was based on. Restoring shutters that you don't, you wouldn't be required to do. The careful work of the windows, including turning one fire exit window to match the, the pattern of the mountains. It's, it's all pretty, it's all pretty exemplary. And heroic. And I, I want to thank you for all the great effort that everybody's put into this. And also for being willing to move the trees slightly to make one twelve a little more visible. So thinking back, three years ago, there was a lot of controversy here on this project. And the three houses could have been, could have been lost completely. And here we are today, seven apartments have been preserved. Which is very important in town. The university has, I don't know how many square feet, fifteen hundred or two thousand square feet of office space to use. And these buildings are now going to be models of preservation. The project has gone from being a controversy into a model outcome. And I think I really appreciate everybody's contribution to that. I think it shows the benefit of community engagement. The university, while there was some disagreement, always had, Ron, your door was always open, the dialogue was open. And we really appreciate that, that you, that you were open to community engagement. And I would say the same about the planning board. Madam Chair, you were very open also to community input on this project. And I think, I think it really demonstrates the benefit of that. Justin, I want to thank you for just tonight, following up on on the expansion of the historic district to include these three buildings. And also what was the other one that you asked about? I forget what you had a second.
Signage.
The plaques.
The plaque, the signage for the, for the notable professors that were here. So so I want to thank everybody for, to everybody who was involved in this effort. And of course, HPC, Julie Capizoli and Kim, Elizabeth Kim, for everything the HPC has done to make this really a model project. I think, I think it sets a new standard for preservation in Princeton. So thank you for everybody on the screen and everybody else who contributed to this outcome.
Thank you, Mr. Zink, ever so much. Your input has been invaluable.
Thank you.
And I, I would also say thank you. And I just have to say Stephanie Valentine is, is quietly hidden. But her and her firm of ALS did a fantastic job on this project.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Okay, who, who do we have next?
Becker Radcliffe and then James Bash.
Okay. I'm sorry, Ms. Radcliffe, if you can unmute yourself. And then Mr. Muller will swear you in.
If you could raise your right hand.
Sandy Harrison, sorry. I, I was not able to see you very well on my screen. So thank you for changing, correct, correcting your name, Mr., Mr. Muller will swear you in.
If you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give will be the truth?
You need to unmute yourself, though.
Okay, yes. Yes, I do, I do. I'm sorry about the other name. I'm borrowing my daughter's. I didn't know it was still on her name. So I'm, yeah, I'm the chairman of Princeton Prospect Foundation. And Clifford referenced at the end of his eloquent thank yous about the controversy two and a half, three years ago. And how after, you know, about four, four and a half months of public comments and concern about the fate of the three Victorians that successful agreement came about and we're, you know, we're very grateful to the university for that, to saving them. And I, there was a coalition, it's called the Save Prospect Coalition at the time, very informal, but it was well more than a thousand townspeople, alumni, my Prince Prospect Foundation, some others that were all involved in this. And I guess I think it's fair to say that if they, most of the people, you know, if they were on the line now and saw the plans that they would be, you know, thrilled to see how you know, thoughtful the efforts are in it for a full rehabilitation and restoration and how substantial it is. And, you know, you know, thank you very much for that. I also would like to, just for the record, say that it, this beyond the saving of these you know, Queen Anne houses from, you know, late nineteenth century or so. That, and what they mean in terms of just their charm and now there's also being functional, is that these are really historic buildings, you know, there was reference to a plaque. For example, you know, one ten prospect, which is now one twelve, was the home to four, two former eating clubs. I just want this on the record. And the other two houses served as homes for distinguished university and faculty of the Institute of Advanced Studies. There, these were residences which welcomed refugees from fascism and where celebrated scholars and luminaries lived and gathered over the past century. Most notably, art history giant Ed, Erwin Panofsky, who authored essential texts in the field. He fled Hitler's Germany and lived and in one fourteen and did many of his writings in the nineteen thirties. He served as a visiting lecturer at the university and in nineteen thirty five, he also became a professor at the Institute of Advanced Studies. Also Einstein reportedly helped read to Panofsky's wife when she was unable to sleep after contracting a baffling ailment in the nineteen forties. Just a couple of more comments here. W S Heckscher was another refugee from the Nazi Reich. He spent his first night in the United States there. Rensselaer Lee met him there and probably Einstein visited them. Dr. Frome Zeitlin, Z E I T L I N, which was, she was the generation's leading scholar of ancient Greek literature and a recipient of a two thousand and sixteen honorary doctorate from Princeton University. She lived for a long time at one fourteen prospect. And finally, Thomas Kaufman, a renowned historian and Mark and Marquan Professor of Art and Archaeology at the university. I believe he's still in that capacity and he was a member of this Save Prospect Foundation Coalition. He lived.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison.
Okay, so he lived one sixteen prospect for, for, you know, about ten, twenty years.
Yes, I remember he testified back in twenty twenty one as well.
Yes, so those are my, you know, these.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Yes. Thank you very much. And thank you for your involvement and commitment to this great outcome all the way.
James Bash is now joining us.
Hello.
Yeah, hi, Mr. Bash, if you could, if you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So I swear or affirm.
Thank you. Good evening, Planning Board, HPC and university friends. I too would like to commend the university for an excellent job in creating this thoughtful plan. When we moved to Princeton twenty five years ago, my wife and I, these three Victorians were lovely and we enjoyed walking and riding by them almost every day. Watching their deterioration in recent years has been difficult. But it is so heartening and thrilling, honestly, to read through this document and this plan and see how these elegant historic homes will be restored to their former grandeur and put back into good use. One morning in June twenty twenty one, when we were trying to figure out how to solve the impasse on Prospect Avenue. I was walking back home from town and I cut through the little enclave of four Victorians just behind the New York Camera Shop and Thomas Suite. I've always loved walking through this little neighborhood, especially at night. It's like a time capsule from a different era. That morning, I talked with a couple who lived in one of these charming Victorians. They told me how those homes used to actually be on William Street and were saved from the wrecking ball decades ago after a significant public outcry. I had heard a little bit about this before and it seemed a relevant tale to what we were going through on Prospect. So I went home and I looked up the whole story in the archives of Town Topics and the Daily Princetonian. Sure enough, in nineteen seventy seven, six nineteenth century homes on William Street were slated to be demolished to make room for the university's new Hoyt Laboratory. However, after much community discussion, engagement and eventually compromise, the university instead moved the four homes which could be relocated to the new area where we see them today. These four Victorians form Nassau Court behind Nassau Street, which is used for faculty and staff housing and looks to newcomers as though it has been there forever. What's more, last year, these four buildings underwent extensive renovations and look absolutely beautiful, including new paint jobs with copper gutters and superb trim and molding work. I encourage everyone to go and have a walk through there and admire their restorations. So I hope the university can employ the same team that did such a fine job on Nassau Court for this new project to restore the family of three Victorians on Prospect. All in all, what happened on William Street in the nineteen seventies was a very similar story to what we experienced on Prospect Avenue. The university wanted to expand its facilities and sought the best way to do this in partnership and engagement with the community. It's wonderful that we can often look to history and learn from the past to help inform the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bash, very much. Are there other members of the public who wish to speak? If so, now is the time to Um, are there other members of the public who wish to speak? If so, now is the time to virtually raise your hand and be brought over. Kip Cherry. Can you bring her over, um, Carrie?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, Kip, if you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm your testimony about to give be the truth?
She, I don't think she's, uh, she's up on the screen yet. There we go. Kip, you need to unmute yourself.
Did you raise your?
Go ahead, Mr.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give be the truth?
I do. I just want to, uh, thank everyone for letting me be a small part of all this. Um, I think that the quality of the work, uh, has created a lot of goodwill and I'm really excited about that. Um, I want to call attention to one small thing that the chair happened to do. I don't know whether you all remember, but there was a bit of a tight spot for a while. It was August and the chair decided it was time for a vacation. And so the planning board took an extended vacation and that made a big difference. So thank you for doing that. And last, I want to thank Q Wang, uh, who behind the scenes is a very important force and, um, I, I know that he has a lot to do with how things work out and, and, uh, so I, I wanted to thank him personally. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Cherry. Uh, the, the record should reflect that the board does traditionally take the month of August. Uh, not, not to me, so, um, but it did come at a good time and I think the, the, uh, that break, I mean, and the, um, and it did, um, you know, provide for some very good, uh, conversations to happen, productive conversations. And so, um, yeah, thank you, Kip. Any other members of the public who wish to speak to this? I'm not seeing any other hands go up, so I'll close the meeting to, uh, close the public comment portion of the meeting um, of the hearing. Uh, other questions or comments from board members? Seeing none, I will just, uh, call out a, a few words that were spoken that I couldn't agree with more. One is thrilling and one is exemplary and I do see Mia Sand went up, so. Uh, Ms. Council President Sachs.
Totally not, um, essential. I just wanted to thank Jim Bash for reminding me of those four houses on William Street and, um, of, uh, as I had discussed with him, my very first act of civic engagement in this town was as a student at Community Park Elementary School and I wrote on behalf of, to the Town Topics on behalf of saving those four houses and, um, so it was really meaningful for me then to be in the planning board, um, many, many years later and to be involved in this very happy compromise in which we save these new houses and town and gown were able to, um, reach a compromise that worked out for both. And I know I've said this before, but this was um, a model for, for compromise in, with both the university and the municipality and, um, the planning board was instrumental in, in forging that. So, thank you, everybody, especially Sandy Harrison and Clifford Zink and, um, and Jim Bash and, you know, members of the public and Kip, you know, everyone who contributed to, um, making this, um, the happy moment that we are now finally have reached. So, thanks.
Yeah. Um, our, our former, uh, planner, Michael Laplace, also felt very strongly about this, so I'm just tossing his name out there too. Um, thank you, Mia. Um, any other comments? And if not, would someone like to? Oh, I get, I'm sorry, we should go over, um, quickly review, um, conditions.
Yes.
Mr. Muller.
Right. I'll first scroll through my notes and then the reports, but it should not take very long.
Yeah.
We talked about the, the rosebud should be single trunk rather than multi-trunk. Trees should be moved to make, is it one, one twelve is the one in the back, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, more visible. Um, early site development, subject review and approvals of the land use engineer. Then from Dan Weisman's report, we went over those and I don't, I don't think I need to go over them again. Um, and Dan Dobremilski's report, um, the paragraph one about the tree, uh, the root protection, um, resolution in the field, um, from Justin Lesko's report. He suggested that, that the, um, the board, uh, uh, approve a condition that the landscape architect or municipal arborist review the final planting plan if approved. And I would suggest we either do that or to have the landscape committee do it. What would the pleasure of the board be on that?
If, 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 if I may add a comment.
Yeah.
Yeah. Mr. Muller, we, we would prefer to work with the arborist because it's a, it's a much easier process than to schedule a meeting and go through that, that, uh, we, and we think it's a pretty simple plan and the arborist, I think, would be appropriate.
Anybody have any contrary feelings?
I support that. Okay.
So I'm fine with that too. Um, I, I just want to, I, um, since we're talking a little bit about landscaping, I believe that the revised landscape plan that the applicant, that the university showed tonight reflects the movement, the slight movement of those three trees.
Oh.
Doesn't it? So we're not asking for further movement, or are we?
I think there will be some slight movement.
Okay, okay. All right, good.
But again, we're not completely moving and.
Uh, I understand. Yep, got it.
Yeah, we have a balance between the, the commercial, um, the residential use as well as the non-residential use. So we need to have a buffer there. But.
Yeah.
Shift.
Yeah. Okay, all right. Thank you. Go ahead, Jerry.
That's it. It's a minus I plan, the one variance we discussed and the conditions we just went over.
And, um, Mr. Degrassia mentioned an early start. Does, would that go into the reservation?
I mentioned that in my, uh,
Oh, sorry.
Presentation of conditions.
Okay, good. All right, any, uh, final questions or comments from board members? And if not, Julie, did I see your hand go up?
Yeah, I move, uh, approval with those conditions.
And, and the variance.
And the variance.
Good, thank you.
And who would like to second? Thank you, Ms. Sachs. Um, roll call vote, please, Carrie.
Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sachs?
Yes, with pleasure.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take your time.
Thank you very much.
Really look forward to, um, continuing to see it all come together. Thank you so much.
We do too. Thank you.
Good night. All right.
Okay, now we have to move Nat back and Nat and Paula B. Back.
Uh-huh.
Okay, thank you, Ian.
Okay, great. So next up, we have Estate Shore LLC. This is continued from April eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. This is a minor subdivision with variances at four seventy-nine Jefferson Road, block five four zero eight, lot one. This is file number P twenty-three twenty-three dash four oh three M S. And, um, since we have, we're, we're taking this up after, um, changes have been made. I don't think that we need a, a, a long overview or maybe no overview at all. Maybe we want to go straight to.
I'm sorry, Chair Wilson, we had to renotice for this hearing.
Yeah.
Uh, so we, um, I sent everything to Mr. Muller. He reviewed it. Um, Jerry, would you like to?
Um, the notice is proper, uh, uh, Carrie has indicated the proof of publication and service are in order and the board has jurisdiction.
Great. Thanks.
Thank you.
Um, Carrie, your, your, um, amplification is really high. I know, I know you've turned it down. Maybe you could, maybe you could turn it down again. Um, so Justin, anything, uh, before we turn to Mr. Kennedy to, and the applicant to discuss the changes they've made that are responsive to staff and board and neighbor to some extent, uh, also neighbor, um, comments and concerns?
Uh, no, not necessarily. I think it would make sense for the applicant to describe, uh, the changes that they have and then, uh, any comments we might have after that.
Right, okay. Mr. Kennedy?
And while the notice was, they needed to notice because of that glitch, um, basically the qualifications portion, that's all been done and this is a continuation of that prior hearing.
Okay, so everyone who testified before and was qualified is still, um, under oath, fully qualified. So do you have any new?
We, we, Madam Chair, yes, we have one, uh, the representative, uh, principal from the, um, applicant didn't testify last time, so, uh, uh, or, um, we, we may want to, just there was a question, um, in Mr. Lesko's memo about asking one of the neighbors, um, uh, if they were willing to sell and we'd, I'd like to have him, uh, sworn in just so we can get that testimony on the record about that occurring.
Okay.
Definitely everyone to your last time.
Let's do that now.
And, and who is, what the name of the person is?
Uh, it's, uh, it's, and he may be on twice, I believe, one of the two, that's pronounced O R, uh, but U G U R, um, uh, here he is. I believe the second one is probably our architect, uh, and probably using, uh, the applicant's link, but or if you, uh, see you've got your camera on, um, Mr. Muller can swear.
Yes.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to use will be the, about to give me the truth?
I do.
So it's one or a front. And if you could, uh, again, state your full name and spell your last name.
The first name is U G U R and the last name is A A Y E, like Tom and like Mary, A, Z like Zebra.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Kennedy.
All right, well, I want to thank you everyone again. Now, Ryan Kennedy from the law firm of Stevens and Lee, uh, for the applicant Estate Shore. Um, feels like it's been a while since we were here, um, but we're, we're happy to be back and, and there are point of this evening for us, um, is to highlight, uh, the changes that we've made, uh, both to our presentation um, and, uh, to the project that we believe are responsive, uh, to the board and, um, many, but Madam Chair, you're, you're correct. I'm sure not all of the, um, neighbors', um, concerns or comments. If you all recall, um, this is a minor subdivision with slightly undersized lots as to lot area. Well, we'll have an updated graphic that shows, um, uh, really does a kind of survey of, uh, the larger neighborhood, um, not just one side of the street. Uh, we'll talk about why one side of the street was kind of chosen last time, uh, but a little larger neighborhood to show how, how quite common these lot sizes are. Um, and we think very importantly, a redesigned home, uh, that faces, addresses and, uh, honors the significant large setback on Jefferson that we heard. Um, frankly, was, was such an important feature of this neighborhood. Um, we, we believe, um, with these changes, um, that the benefit of this project, um, aside from the planning her testimony that you heard last time, um, absolutely outweighs the as of right option. There was some discussion, uh, at the end of the first meeting about talking about something that I usually don't like to talk about with applicants. That is, what else could be built here, right? What the large, single-family home or the almost as large, um, a, a single-family home at five thousand square feet or a potentially four thousand square foot, single-family home and an ADU and an ADU and home that wouldn't necessarily face Jefferson, like we're able to do with, um, uh, responding to the, the board's comments and would have, uh, significantly different setbacks, um, on the secondary street. Uh, because accessory structures don't necessarily have the same setbacks as a home. So there are some, um, uh, additional benefits of uh, having, um, the subdivision that we want to definitely walk through. We also heard loud and clear that while proportionally FAR is part of the ordinance, um, we're walking away from that. These are two twenty-five hundred square foot homes. They are, um, twenty-five percent floor area. Um, we are also shown and designed, uh, homes that use, uh, not, that do not utilize the graduated coverage numbers available for undersized lots. So we're e- excited to show these to you. Um, and as, as a get-go, before I open up our, our first piece of, um, our, our revised exhibit from last time, I'll, uh, since O R is here and just to get it a- out of the way, um, I'm going to ask him, uh, before we do our exhibits, about speaking with, uh, the one, uh, neighbor to make sure that, uh, we, we get on the record that we asked, uh, whether they're interested in, in, in selling additional lands. So O R, um, if you don't mind if I ask you that now, um, did you approach the, the neighbor on, uh, Jefferson, uh, before this project, uh, started or, or some time ago and asked if they were interested in selling some additional land to you?
Yes, I did. And they said no, because if they do, it will be, uh, they will not be compliant in their home with the zoning.
So while we, we, thank you, O R. Um, so while we did ask, um, we'll show as we go through our slides that because that home is actually only about ten feet from the lot line, uh, the additional land granted, even if it was possible, would make them no, not, would make them less non-conforming. So actually, it may not have been necessary to ask, but we did and, uh, the answer was no.
And Ryan, could you go over, um, what the position of the applicant is with respect to that kind of request with respect to the other adjacent lots?
Absolutely. So there are only, uh, two adjacent lots and, uh, uh, when we show our slides, we'll show you that one, while one, uh, the, the one was approached on Jefferson, uh, is, would technically from a lot area perspective have land to, I suppose, subdivide and sell. Um, their home is already within the side yard setback, so by granting that land, it would create an additional non-conformity and the, the other lot on the, uh, secondary street side is already non-conforming as to lot area and with, and it would not be possible for them to give more, uh, property, uh, to the applicant.
Thank you.
Um, so with that, uh, last time we had one set of exhibits, um, we have another set tonight. I suppose we could call this A two.
Yeah.
Uh, it is different from what we did last time. If, if that's right, I'll, um.
Yeah, that's fine. That, that'll be A two.
And while I'm doing that, I'll ask our engineer, uh, to unmute himself and, uh, he's already sworn in and, um, qualified, so I won't bore us with that, but, uh, I'll scroll down till I see Eric. There we are. So Eric, as we did last time, um, and, uh, it is odd for me not to fully introduce you, so I do appreciate, uh, uh, the, in the interest of time, um, but first we can start kind of taking the board through again. Uh, we're in the, uh, R six, uh, in the former township. That's an arrow kind of pointing to where the property is in the corner of, uh, Jefferson there.
Correct.
Uh, then we've got, uh, the neighborhood view again, um, uh, moving to the slide number four, uh, kind of a street view showing the existing oversized lot and the, the houses surrounding it.
Correct.
All right. So let's get to the program here and, and what we heard and talked about last time, uh, from the board. So on the left, that's the original subdivision, uh, proposal and on the right, uh, that's the revised, uh, subdivision, uh, plan and, and, uh, sketch plan for the placement of the homes. Um, if you want to just quickly, Eric, take us through the, the main changes here of what we, what we did between this and, uh, this time and gosh, about a month and a half ago.
Certainly. Uh, so the exhibit that's shown on the left-hand side of the screen, that was the original subdivision proposal where we were proposing two new residential dwelling with a detached garage and driveway. Both homes would access and front on Kyler. Both garages and driveways would also access Kyler Street directly, or sorry, Kyler Road directly. Based on comments that the board provided at the last meeting, the applicant went back and we decided to redesign the corner lot, the corner lot being, uh, the dwelling that's being proposed at the intersection of Jefferson and Kyler. What we have done essentially is to rotate the house ninety degrees. Um, so instead of, uh, the corner lot now, which was previously proposed to front on, on Kyler Road, that dwelling has been redesigned and rotated, rotated ninety degrees. So the frontage is actually on Jefferson. that dwelling has been redesigned and rotated, rotated ninety degrees, so the frontage is actually on Jefferson. In addition to that, what we have done is to move the dwelling further back into the property, which would be uh along Kyler Road. So that the front setback or the prevailing front setback for the corner lot conforms to the Jefferson road setback requirement. Additionally, the detached garage and driveway, instead of accessing Kyler Road, now access is going to be provided directly to Jefferson Road. The driveway and the garage will be located on the northernly side of the project, of the property. Essentially, what this design has done, it is allowed us to eliminate the variance that the applicant previously sought for the setback requirement in Jefferson. However, by rotating the house ninety degrees and moving the house farther back into the property, we were able to conform with that front setback requirement, the prevailing setback. However, that in order to create uniformity, uniformity, uniformity along Kyler Road, the dwelling now encroaches within the setback, the prevailing setback on Kyler. Um, currently, the required prevailing setback is thirty-four feet on Kyler Road, and the applicant is proposing twenty-six point five feet, and that setback is measured from the right of way to the building line, uh the building side. However, that setback is in line with the new dwelling that's being proposed on Kyler Road. Uh, that side of the dwelling on the corner lot actually aligns with the front porch of the new dwelling that's being proposed, that only has access to Kyler Road. In addition to that, the applicant has also, we have revised the impervious surface calculation. And essentially, in the R dash sig zone, the applicant has permitted forty-nine and a half percent. Um, the respective coverage that's currently proposed is um approximately thirty-one percent for the corner lot, which is the lot on Kyler and Jefferson Roads. And the other lot, the interior lot, uh, the maximum coverage just proposes thirty and a half percent. And essentially, that is the applicant's revision to the proposal based on the comments that the board provided and comments that we heard from the public at the last meeting.
Alright, Eric, before we leave this slide, just a couple more questions about the corner Jefferson lot that um because of this significantly large setback on um on Jefferson and the requirement for a lot that's less than a hundred feet wide to have the driveway on this side, um there's, I, I guess, additional reasons why it's um encroaching slightly into that setback. Is that, is that right? That it's not quite as simple as just moving it um to the side a, a few more feet?
Correct.
Moving on to the, the next line, we've got some uh renderings of the redesigned um home at the top that'll be on the corner of uh Jefferson, is that correct? And then below is the existing house proposed um uh for uh for the second lot.
That's correct.
Um, again, moving on to our bulk table that the board had seen uh last time, uh we still have that um own small uh variance for a lot area, but these lots will otherwise conform in all other respects. Um, and while we've eliminated the uh, we feel quite significant um Jefferson Street setback issue, there is, while uh plus or minus thirty-four is required uh on the secondary road, uh because many of these homes have front porches, uh those front porches encroach into that, so the, the design here uh is at twenty-six point eight feet, um which uh is lines up uh with that front porch um of the home next door and many of the others on the street and, and in order to have the driveway in the compliant location um and, and still have the, the setback, um those extra couple feet are, are necessary. Is that fair to say, Eric?
That's correct.
Um, we did a few other exhibits that kind of show the significance of that setback. We kind of drew that um forty-seven foot line uh down Jefferson to see you know, how uh not, you know, obviously, these are averages, not every home complies with it, uh but our design uh now will, and you know, we heard loud and clear from the board uh and the neighborhood that that Jefferson corridor uh is of uh, you know, significance uh uh for, for the neighborhood, and uh we were happy to uh happy, but uh, you know, we were, we were, took it back to the drawing board uh and, and redesigned a, a new home for that front lot that that uh complies with that.
Correct.
Now, Eric, this next uh exhibit shows, I guess, the two houses, the site plan here, but then it kind of draws in uh the uh, the secondary roads setback that we're coming close to, um but for, for context uh the, the remainder of the lots are kind of tight, um and, and while I would say generally matching, it is an average. Uh, it, it comes quite close, and then would you saying um the front line of the second front yard, you know, in the former township, everyone has two front yards, so the uh the Kyler uh road front yard um does actually match the compliant front porch location of the house next door.
Correct.
Um, this is an exhibit that um everyone perhaps remembers last time that we showed about the uh lots being created and the undersized lots on our side of the street happens to be where the tax map ended, uh and uh we'll show you another slide that shows a much more expansive uh view of the neighborhood to show all of the um significant number predominant, frankly, of undersized lots uh in the area, but, but um these ones here are shown on our side of the street are all uh some combination of undersized as for width, uh where eighty-five is required and area. Is that right, Eric?
That's correct.
Alright, now, zooming out a bit, you know, we kind of a bit of anomaly here, but we kind of turned things sideways and uh frankly, it's uh a bit of a challenge to stitch Princeton's tax maps together, but we we did our best. Um, our project's uh, so whereas before we were just looking at this row of homes here um on our side of the street, we've now expanded it to a much bigger area uh in the zone, and probably one of the questions we'll ask is, gosh, the, the, the block uh next door, I guess, to the south of the project, that side of the street seems to be kind of a I don't know, an island of conformity. Um, and uh as it turns out, uh there is a private deed restriction on many of those properties, keeping them from being subdivided, that is not applicable to the rest of uh uh the neighborhood, uh that perhaps explains uh some of, of the difference. So you can kind of see that line uh on our side of the street uh with uh smaller lots, many of whom are non-conforming and smaller than what we're proposing. Um, not conforming in width where ours are, for example, um then the uh, uh, south side of the street uh where they uh, they do predominantly uh conform, but are subject to uh uh a private deed restriction uh that uh has been uh litigated to uh no success for those who are looking to eliminate it. I'll, I'll, I'll put it that way. Um, with that, Eric, uh, um, I'll see if the board uh or any professionals have any uh questions for engineer, and I, then I'd like to get into a, a recap, a brief one of our planning testimony.
Uh, Mr. Lesko?
Uh, yes, thanks, Madam Chair. Um I have a question or, or just a general concern about the uh side yard, uh the prevailing front yard setback variance on Kyler. Um, you testified to some of the reasons why uh you believe that's correct, uh, Mr. Rubnerain, uh, to ask for that. But I'm not seeing other porches on that, on Kyler over there, except for the one you've proposed. In the one right next to it, so can you explain more about where these other porches are, or how the side of a building uh, you know, lining up with porches is, is kind of uh desirable?
So generally, when you're looking at a streetscape, even an expanded streetscape, you're looking at where the building line typically is. And yes, I do agree that this is the side of a building uh that we're looking at as compared to the side uh and open porch. But that still represents where the actual structure is. And many times, when you're looking along that street, you're seeing the structure, you're not necessarily seeing the various parts of the structure. So we do believe that although the building itself is encroaching within that front prevailing setback, having some uniformity along the street is going to help to maintain that streetscape in the area.
But if there are no other porches, I mean, couldn't you logically say the porch on the eastern lot should be, the whole building should be pushed back, so then this building could be pushed back to be in line with it and keep the prevailing setback? I, I just don't see how kind of creating this condition is the basis for a variance on the other lot.
So I, well, I'll, I'll just interject that I, I, I don't, I don't, we're suggesting that was the basis. We were just noting that from a distance perspective, that five additional feet uh happens to be the front of the front porch and the same distance to the street uh for the house, the compliant house uh next door. Not that, that there was some pattern of, uh, and of course, this is the only corner lot on the street. Um, or at least this, pardon me, the only corner lot setback that we're talking about on this side street, the other um, the other homes front uh to, to Kyler down the street. So this is a kind of a unique position of being um uh the, having, addressing this um, this particular front yard on this side of the street. Um, but I'll, I just suggest that from our engineer's testimony, that the, the reasons were for, necessarily for lot placement, and that the, the comments on front porch were more about compatibility.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Mr. Cohen?
I have two um questions, I guess. First, I know one of the other areas of comment and concern from neighbors at the last meeting did have to do with stormwater, and there is an increase, even though you're complying with the standards of what impervious is permitted on these lots, um, you are uh at least in a situation where you're a, a small project, you're not an exempt project due to increase in coverage, and I'm curious if you could tell us a little bit about how you're intending to manage the stormwater. I know this is a subdivision, it's not a site plan application, but I'd like to hear a little bit about uh what measures you're going to be taking to deal with stormwater. And then I, I'll go ahead and, and ask my other question, uh you can, you know, take them one at a time, but it seems to me the problem with the front yard setback on Kyler is created by putting the driveway um fronting on Jefferson. And certainly in our neighborhood character standards, you know, uh developers are encouraged even on corner lots uh to put the driveway, you know, coming into the side yard rather than, you know, coming into the front yard. And I'm curious if you've looked at all, especially like if you were to do a shared driveway and you would also even be allowed to have the, the garages um right on the property line um by my memory of the, of the neighborhood standards, you could really free up a lot of flexibility in how you use the space on the lot. Not need the front yard setback for the corner bu- building and uh reduced you know, pervious coverage even, even further, and I'd just like to know whether you gave that uh design approach any consideration.
So Eric, but, but be- before you start, just on the second question, I hope I'll guide you to answer that one first, uh, cause not that not that stormwater is ever easy, but I, I know you'll, you'll be able to, you know, cause we've, we've looked at the stormwater um on the site um quite a bit, at least conceptually. Um, uh, so one, uh, under the, uh David, you're, you're a hundred percent correct that there is this idea, um, you know, in, in neighborhood character, though. Uh, we looked through it, it is for, you know, under something that maybe not undersized, but for, what they, what it's defined is small lot, so less than seventy-five uh feet in, in width, um and at some point actually might have been even required if we were small enough to do that. Uh, that's lot is not unique, but maybe unique in, in terms of neighborhood character in that it is square. Um, and with that um predominant and deep Jefferson setback, um even, I think Eric might recount, um, you know, as by doing the shared driveway, um, you're not left with very, you know, by respecting that um setback, the lot is quite unique in that there is not much of a building envelope, you know, in this case, from left to right, you know, Jefferson front to back, that even with the shared driveway, um, having the room for uh, for, you know, two cars, example, to, to flare out. You're not really left with much, because you know, while that allows for um setback relief for driveway, you still have to have room for the parking, you know, essentially on your side, and it does limit and almost kind of remove almost all kind of backyard, I know with two front yards, which is front, which is back. But with Jefferson being the front in the front of the house, it does eliminate a lot of that backyard opportunity, um both by having the driver there and even with the shared driveway scenario. Um, so uh Eric, just a apology for, for, for jumping in, but you know, we had talked, we, we had looked up just before the meeting, the the uh, refreshed ourselves on the neighborhood character rules. I just wanted to get that in verse before, before you answered, so ap- apologies for jumping in.
No problem, Ryan. So as Ryan indicated, it's when we did look at the neighborhood character or trying to create this corner lot, given the setbacks that we have. If access was taken to Jeff, to Kyler in lieu of Jefferson Road, it basically eliminates the entire rear yard for the corner lot, um because given where the garage would be located, where the driveway would have to be located, it leaves you virtually no backyard. Essentially, you're the back of the house, because the house still fronts on Jefferson. You're going to have almost no usable area between the house and the driveway. Considering the driveway itself would have to be separated from the property line. The garage itself would be setback also. There's would be virtually no opportunity for any type of outdoor utility of the space that exists in that area. Um, so that was one of the consideration in, actually, in addition to the ordinances to not even considering that um to try to create or at least provide a dwelling with a backyard and some open space that can be used. Um, your second question regarding stormwater, we did take a look at the, what we would do regarding stormwater, and this project once if the board approves it and when building permits are applied for, it is going to be subject to the minor stormwater provision in the municipal ordinance. And presently, stormwater generally fro- flows from this property from what we see to north essentially in both directions towards Jefferson and also towards Kyler. Um, so what we've normally done for these minor developments or the minor stormwater projects in Princeton are typically either rain gardens, underground infiltration basins. Um, we've even looked at porous pavements, and once we get to that point where we're designing the actual site, depending upon what type of soils we have on the property, how deep the groundwater table is, we'll decide which one of those green B M Ps the applicant is going to utilize to provide stormwater control. But we fully anticipate being able to comply with all of the minor stormwater provisions in the Princeton, in Princeton's ordinance.
Uh, David, you're muted.
That's okay, I, I was only saying thank you, nothing important.
Okay. Have a, a couple of questions. Um, uh, the driveway onto Jefferson uh right along the um northern lot line, I guess it is, are you removing any trees in order to put that driveway in? I can see, you know, on aerial maps that there are trees there. I don't know whether they're on this property or the neighboring property. Uh, I'm just uh concerned about screening um since the neighbor's house is uh so close to the lot line already.
So the trees appears to be on the neighbor's property, on the neighboring property to the north of us. Um, part of our original survey work for the project included locating the trees on this property. And we are showing all of the trees that exist on this lot that's in question. And in this particular area where the driveway and the garage is going to be constructed, only there is a tree towards the back of the property in that northeasterly corner where the garage is being proposed, that's going to be removed. However, the driveway itself doesn't require any tree removal on this site.
Well, you'll need to be very careful to protect the roots of the trees that are right on the property line, uh, or very close to the property line on the neighboring property, that's um really important thing to do, so uh you'll need to consult with the arborist and maybe our landscape architect um when, it will, I expect to put that in as a, a condition if we get to that point. Um, I also wanted to ask about um well, maybe I'm getting ahead of myself about um a bedroom question, but on the sign, um, excuse me, on the plan here, I think that you show a sidewalk on Jefferson, is that correct? Or are you planning to construct a sidewalk? I don't think there are sidewalks on Jefferson, right? There are there, or am I wrong about that?
No, there currently does exist a sidewalk on Jefferson and
Oh, okay, excuse me. Alright. And not, but not on Kyler and you don't intend to put a sidewalk along Kyler. I know it's not in our sidewalk plan. I just want to confirm what your intention is.
Correct. There's no sidewalk proposed on Kyler.
Yeah. Okay. Are there other questions from board members? Mr. Kennedy, do you have any other testimony?
I would, it'll be short, but I would like to have our our planner back just to, just to summarize, we do have a slightly different variance situation. I just want to make sure that the record is is clear that, you know, what we've got here. So Susan, if you would turn your camera on. I'll have to scroll through.
Hi, it's Barbara. I'm here.
Thank you. Now, if you I'm sorry, Barbara, when I, when the, when the, when the screen is covering up everyone's faces, I I I start looking at someone else and thinking, I'm, so apologies. So it, a couple of things before you start, you know, we, we, we talked a little bit about at the beginning, at least from a summary perspective, what could go here and what we'd prefer, you know, why we prefer this plan with two smaller homes that are more in keeping with the, the, the current neighborhood versus one really big one. And and then one other big piece of this was with either, you know, we plan or the condition to orient the Jefferson lot to Jefferson to match the rest of the street. And ultimately, the kind of as of right alternative would be possibly a 5,000 square foot house here or a 4,000 square foot home with a thousand square foot ADU that don't necessarily, while they would respect the setbacks without a variance, would not necessarily have to be oriented in any particular way. So with that, maybe just briefly remind the board of 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 the, your, your testimony about the size, particularly for the neighborhood and the, the reasons for this and and I'll we did talk about being brief and that we
And I acknowledge I'm still under oath from the last hearing.
Correct.
And so just briefly, as described, the applicant did change the application so that the home on proposal lot 1.01 would be oriented towards Jefferson Road. And this created a side yard setback or a front yard setback, I'm sorry, along Kyler Road. Looking back at the application and the, I came to notice that the actually when the application was filed, this proposal was, the 2023 master plan had not yet been adopted. So I looked at the prior 2013 and 2017, and I noticed that they talk about the importance of neighborhood character. And they also talk about the impacts of the creation of oversized homes in neighborhoods and how that disrupts a neighborhood character. So in this instance, the subdivision would result in two homes that are more in line with the overall character of this portion of the community. With respect to the setback along Kyler Road, yes, it's more in line with the porch of the neighboring property, but I also want to remind that that neighboring property is part of this application. So it respects established open air, light open air, light air and open space in the neighborhood. And the person who would be most impacted would actually be the portion that the second home that is part of this application. In that respect, some of those negative impacts are mitigated. Therefore, with the respect to the lot sizes, I believe it does bring it back into closer conformity with the neighborhood, particularly along Kyler Road and presents every investment into this portion of the community. Were there?
Thank you, Barbara, you know, and and everything, your prior testimony still rings true other than those revisions.
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you. Madam Chair, I'm happy to answer.
Anything else? Anything else, Mr. Kennedy?
No, that, that is, that is our testimony. Thank you.
Okay, and so why, why would, why wouldn't you, can you pull that image back up? Could you shrink the footprint of the home that runs on Jefferson in order to avoid the variance along Kyler?
Erica, let's see if you can, you can field that one. And apologize, may go back to the view that would show this a little bit better here.
Yeah.
I guess the question is, could, could either site or other designs be done to to shrink the size of or the footprint of the Jefferson home in order to avoid the, you know, five foot setback issue that we have?
So theoretically, you could reduce the footprint of the dwelling to make it conforming to the setback. I mean, we could certainly build a smaller house. However, in building a smaller house, then again, it goes back to the average or the sizes of the dwellings that are in the neighborhood. We do believe that this is a little bit more in keeping. With that, additionally, if you were to change the footprint, part of what the applicant is trying to do is to create some usable rear yard or a backyard space for this house's most residential dwellings. Typically, we'll have a backyard or some open space where the occupants can dwell outside. If we were to adjust the footprint so that we could eliminate that front setback on Kyler, it'll require to maintain the same square footage of the house, making the house a little bit deeper from Jefferson in an easterly direction. Which by doing that, again, we're reducing that rear yard, that open space that's actually available for the applicant to use for any sort of outdoor activity.
And I do appreciate that you talked about 25% maximum FAR respecting that. I think that I also read in the materials that you're, that these homes are meant to be five bedroom, four bathroom homes, which you know, that's a, that's, that's a lot of space. And I'm not, I, I don't mean to say that in order to, you know, cast judgment on the or aspersions or whatever, whatever on the design. I'm just saying that it might be bigger than it needs to be and you're you're creating a hardship or a a variance where you may not need to. That's my point. So I don't know what kind of it, it may be just something for the board to discuss later on. I see, David, you're leaning forward in your chair. Maybe you have a, a comment to to make some stammering.
It's, yeah, it's just a reflection on, on your suggestion. And I think that there are two possibilities. One is to shrink the size of the the structure, which would be, you could do and keep a backyard. Although, albeit small, one can also reconfigure the ground floor of, or both floors of the, of the structure so that it fits within the envelope. And doesn't shrink it at all. It can fully use the available FAR. But I think in that case, you would lose the backyard. So I'm just, you know, giving a little reflection for where the board might want to go with its discussion of this. Maybe when we get back from a break, if we're going to take a break, you know, before we hear the public comment. But I think when we do get around to discussing it, that's a good way to to frame it, sort of the alternative between a smaller house or a backyard or the variance, you know, those are three options.
Right. Okay, thank you for that. That's helpful. And are there any other questions or comments from board members before we break? Because I think I appreciate your bringing that up, David. It's, we traditionally do break right around now, nine o'clock. For 10 minutes or so, I'm not seeing any hands go up. And so let's let's reconvene at 9:10 or 9:11. And I will see you then. Thanks. I have one other question. Thank you, Carrie. I have one other question I would like to pose and maybe other board members do too. And I have to keep reminding myself, this is a subdivision and not a site plan application. But I do, you know, be, you know, because there are requests for variances and stuff, but one thing that occurs to me is to ask about street trees. And I know that there are additional trees that are between the homes and the streets, even if they're not in a line or with other street trees, because I, I believe Kyler, you know, does not have an alley of street trees, at least on the north side. I can't remember the south side. I don't think the south side either. So is there can you speak a little bit to the planting of trees between the homes and the streets?
Madam Chair, let me, let me put one of our exhibits back and I'll invite Eric to to rejoin us because I think that's an excellent you know, comment and so here's, this is the existing neighborhood and you're right, there's, there's not, this side of the street in kind of both respects is not really flush with them, but you could see the, the, the line of trees between the existing lot here and and the neighbor that, I'll just refer to them as neighbor that was not interested in selling at, on, on Jefferson. That would certainly be protected and intention to remain as well as on the, the far side of the lot. Eric, if you want to perhaps talk a little bit about what could be done between the two new lots, for example, and any other kind of supplemental planting, planting. And if, I'm sure if there is a preference for planting elsewhere, you know, in that kind of setback space, or, you know, we would certainly be willing to, are interested in hearing where, where those, you know, resources should go and where we should consider putting them.
Certainly. So Ryan, if you could scroll to the subdivision plan?
Wrong way, apologies.
And if we could zoom into the current layout. Thank you. So what we can do is along the new common property line that the applicant is proposing between the two newly created lots. In order to create some privacy, the applicant would be certainly more than willing to plant trees or shrubs or a combination thereof along that prop, common property line in order to create some separation between the two properties. Additionally, if the board prefers or if the board would like, the applicant would certainly be willing to plant street trees in accordance with the ordinance. Definitely along Jefferson Road. So add additional trees and we will be removing some trees as part of the application. And in accordance with the township free removal ordinance, the applicant will be replanting trees to replace the ones that are being removed.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions from board members? Claudia Wilson Anderson?
What are the implications, if any, for a detached garage versus a, an attached garage for redesign? In which you might be able to move the Jefferson Road house over to the north and avoid the paths that's the driveway and the garage might be adjacent to each other.
Erica, maybe see if you can speak to that from a from a setback perspective, attaching the garage would actually require it would become, you know, kind of amoeba like and kind of attached to the, the home and then the entire home garage combination would have to respect the full home setback. So that might actually put us in the other direction, unfortunately, making it more challenging to there. But Eric.
No, certainly, because looking at the corner lot, if we were to take that garage and physically attach it to the structure, then the garage itself, using the same footprint that we have for the house and the same footprint for the garage, the garage would be partly in that side yard or that northerly side setback, which would require us to shift the house even further to the south or into the front setback on Kyler in order to maintain essentially the same square footage that we currently have.
Okay, so you're saying it wouldn't solve the problem. And what's really the question before us is from your perspective, it wouldn't solve the problem. And, and so the question for the board is whether, notwithstanding and given that our task tonight is not to engineer the site, whether we are interested in granting that setback variance or not. And, and David gave a sort of a framework for discussing that a little bit later on, maybe after we hear public comment. Are there other, other questions or comments from board members? Okay, or from staff? Any issues, Derek or I guess Dan is not part of this review. Or yeah, there you are, Dan, sorry. Derek or Dan Weisman want to raise?
Nope.
Okay. In that case, I think it would be a good time to open up the meeting for public comment. There are 30 attendees, so now is the time if you would like to
triggered something and I said, if it's okay, two minutes just to, to cover one last note before we open to the, to the public.
Okay, well, I'll, I will let the public know that now is the time to raise your hand if you would like to speak. And I know people are already doing that, but just keep going ahead. And when, when we do start public comment after Mr. Kennedy's remarks, we'll take comments in the order in which hands were raised. Ryan?
Thank you. Your, your, your note about this not being a site plan was indeed a good one, Madam Chair, because I, I want to just absolutely be clear of a couple of things. Well, one, you know, we've talked about what the, the intention of the applicant is here. And that intention is both what, what they've said on, on the record and the conditions that this board would grant. But there's a couple of ones that I think we want to be even more clear about. One is that they're proposing to build two single family homes, not two single homie homes and two ADUs or any other units beyond what we've shown you here. We could, if, if the questions come up, talk, have our engineer talk a little bit more about why that might be kind of challenging on the site where it might not even really work with parking spaces or, or the layouts. But I just wanted to note, it's, it's in Mr. Lusko's memo to an extent, but your, your note about site plan reminded me, and I just want to absolutely know beyond what the applicant is proposing not to do that. To add those ADUs would actually require a site plan approval, even if we were to do it in short order after the fact here. And we're both haven't asked for that. There is no site plan component for four or for two homes and two ADUs. And that would be necessary if we were to propose that even after the within a period after putting this together. So there are obstacles to that. That is not the applicant's proposal. And I just want to be clear that we are not asking for site plan approval, which we're really the only way that we could get additional units, including ADUs, beyond the two single family homes that we've proposed.
Okay. So we have seven or eight people whose hands are raised. And I think the first two, unless Carrie, you've brought anybody over already?
I just started.
Okay, great. Thank you. Jennings and then Sandy Ryder and then Serena Connolly after that. So the person identified as Jennings, if you could activate your camera, thank you. And unmute yourself and then Mr. Mueller will swear you in.
Just checking to make sure. I don't believe she testified previously.
No, I haven't.
He.
Oh, he. Or they.
Sorry. Did you testify previously? I don't think you did.
No, I did not.
No.
If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Just want to affirm, please state your full name and spell your last name.
Michael Jennings, J E N N I N G S.
Thank you. Okay.
Go ahead. Thank you.
My wife and I are the neighbors most directly affected by the proposal. We own the home from Jefferson, looking at the lot to the left. And we have I, I wouldn't say concerns. The one concern we certainly do have is to reiterate a question raised by a board member, and that is concerning the trees on our side of the property line. There are three enormous pine trees over a hundred feet tall and a huge star magnolia by the sidewalk. And the plan as currently proposed, putting the driveway in that close to our line is a hundred percent going to affect the, the root development of those trees and make them extremely unstable. So moving on from the concern about that, the current use, the driveways with the enormous increase in impermeable space in these lots, we already have a water problem. The water flows from the house to our left into our lot and these houses will undoubtedly be like every other new house in the neighborhood, be somewhat above grade, making the water flow from that side into our house. So we're also concerned about the driveway and the grade. Picking up on a comment made by one of the board members, I didn't understand the engineer's response to the idea that the garage is being made attached. If the garage were made attached on the house facing on Jefferson Road, the driveways, the driveways would be moved much further away from our property and thus from the tree's root systems and would increase, let's face it, these, these two homes as proposed will have very, very little outdoor space. And a lot of that outdoor space is taken up right now by two very long, it strikes me as inordinately long driveways. I see no reason to have driveways that reach all the way back as they do now, instead of having a garage next to the house, increasing the outdoor space and reducing the amount of impermeable surface in the two lots. We, we agree with the, we're in favor of the intent of the master plan. We'd like nothing better than to see more reasonably or relatively affordable housing in Princeton. And so if it's within the purview of the board to ask that the developer reduce the square footage of the two homes, if the, if the application is granted, and make them into more affordable homes. I understand that the developer has profitability concerns. He paid a lot of money for the lot, but I would certainly ask the board to consider seriously the issue of the driveway.
Thank you.
The size of the lots.
Okay. Thanks. Thanks, Mr. Jennings.
Louise, I'm just wondering, would it be possible while we have these Mr. Jennings questions in mind, and there were quite a few, which I think are really important questions, could we hear from the applicant? Or do you want to wait until all of the comment?
I put stars next to three things there myself, so I definitely want to raise the the issue of the tree protection and the grading and water flow and the location of the driveway and the size of the yards, et cetera. So I definitely want to discuss that. I'd rather wait until the, until everybody's had a chance to talk.
As long as you're remembering it, that's good.
Yeah, yeah.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next person is Sandy Ryder and then Serena Connolly and then Paul Wahlberg.
Welcome, Ms. Ryder. Mr. Mueller will swear you in.
You have not been sworn, you were not sworn previously, correct?
No.
Excuse me, just let me interrupt for a sec. Jerry, since this is a different plan from what was looked at before, I don't want to prevent people who spoke last time from speaking. I would rather wait and let other people who have not spoken yet speak first. But I don't want to prevent people from commenting on the revised plan.
Yeah, I think that makes so many good sense. They will not have to be sworn in as opposed to-
Oh, okay. All right, great. All right, great. Thank you.
If you could raise your right hand, you swear or affirm the testimony about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Just want to affirm, please state your full name and spell your last name.
My name is Sandy Ryder, R E I D as in David, E R.
Okay.
Shall I go?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Okay, planning board members, thank you for this opportunity to speak with you. I hope to make my statements clear and concise. First, let me say that I am opposed to you granting the variance for undersized lots at 479 Jefferson Road. Please bear with me, this was written before I saw tonight's presentation and I have to have changed some of it. In the new discussion of lots, of lot sizes on Kyler Road, I was confused. Were we talking about number of frontage feet or total lot size when we saw the maps that showed all the undersized lots in the neighborhood? Because my husband and I went and looked up many lots on Kyler Road and found that many were actually at 2.25 acreage or above. It is really not a neighborhood of undersized lots. Response to Mia Sachs, who asked why we would want one very big home on 479 Jefferson. My husband and I walked along Jefferson. It is indeed a beautiful street with a deep setback, many large lots and big, beautiful homes. It seems to me that a large lot with one large home at 479 Jefferson is in fact in keeping with Jefferson Road. While I'm, while I am pleased that the board quickly agreed that it would be unpleasant and not in keeping with the street for people on Jefferson to look at the side of one of the planned houses on Kyler, it gave me pause. Why aren't you, the board, eager to maintain the required 0.25 acre lots on Kyler? Certainly, lot size affects a neighborhood more than whether the side or front facade faces Jefferson. And why isn't anyone discussing the yard size on the Kyler Roadhouse, only the Jefferson Roadhouse? Sadly, I must say, this makes me feel like a second-class citizen. This both surprises and appalls me, especially in light of the history of our cherished neighborhood. Our neighborhood was originally called Maple Crest. Our sister neighborhood in West Windsor was Maple Glen or Glen Acres. If you are interested, there is a documentary called Glen Acres in Black and White about our unique neighborhoods. Lastly, please do not approve the variance for undersized lots at 479 Jefferson Place. Respectfully, Sandy Ryder.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
Sure. How do I get rid of myself?
You'll be moved back over to the attendees, okay?
Okay, the next, next person to speak is Serena Connolly.
Yes, and she was previously sworn.
That's right. Members of the planning board, thank you for spending your Tuesday night on important community business and thank you for the opportunity to speak. What we've heard presented this evening corrects some issues in the developer's original application, but still fails to address a fundamental problem that is the basis for my opposition. The proposed lot sizes have not changed. This remains an application for two non-conforming lots, not one, but two. Just because there are other undersized lots in the neighborhood, many of which were created seventy years ago, does not mean that additional undersized lots should be created now. Otherwise, why do we today have minimum lot size requirements? Because the proposed houses are too big for these undersized lots, the front yard setback on Kyler for Lot 1 is around eighty percent of the required distance. That's around five feet too short, actually more than that. I oppose these overcrowded and undersized lots and I oppose this subdivision. There is no need for a subdivision. The developers, as has already been stated this evening, can build two houses on the undivided lot, one regular-sized and one smaller, using the ADU ordinance. So why are they seeking subdivision? Presumably because they have figured out that this will maximize their profits. And they can boost them even further. If granted their subdivision, as has also been mentioned this evening, they will be allowed, subject to a site plan, to build one house and one ADU on each undersized lot, creating four houses where there was previously just one. Imagine this scenario replicated across the neighborhood. Indeed, just a few streets away, there is right now an application to build four houses on what is currently one lot. Granting these subdivisions, whether creating two houses or two houses plus two ADUs would constitute a radical change to the character of our neighborhood. I commend and commiserate with the planning board, which has already spent considerable time on 479 Jefferson. I hope they will not have to spend even more of their volunteered time considering this profit-driven application. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Okay, the next person I have brought over is Paul Wahlberg. If you could put your video on soon.
Mr. Wahlberg is also sworn in, he testified previously.
Okay, Mr. Wahlberg, if you could activate your camera, you've already been sworn in, so.
Apologies, it says you cannot start your video because the host has stopped it.
Ah. We're gonna make that right. There we go.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So I've already been sworn in, I don't need to-
Right, then I have to be sworn in again.
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Dear members of the planning board, thank you for providing me an opportunity to speak. I did speak last time and to reiterate what I had said before, forty-five people from Kyler, Walnut, Dempsey and Ewing surrounding this property have signed a petition expressing opposition to subdivisions that allow developers to build four houses where there was originally only one. This is a fundamental problem that the ADU ordinance has created. Split allotted two, you get an opportunity to build four times as many homes. Please do not subdivide conforming lots in our neighborhood into non-conforming lots, regardless of how many houses are built. The reason is doing so undermines the integrity of our current zoning laws, creating a precedent that encourages developers to pursue a growing number of similar requests for subdivision in the future. It's not just about this variance request. This forces us potentially in the future to expend tremendous amounts of energy opposing all future variances on a lot-by-lot basis. From my perspective, this is abusing the variance process to undermine zoning ordinances and doing so isn't fair to the residents of our community, the same people that the zoning ordinances were designed to protect. Under some circumstances in the future, every time we are not able to organize fast enough to successfully oppose future variances, future variances, we risk having four houses built where there was originally only one. That's a problem and it would be an exhausting problem for us. It is very misleading to describe this test case variance as minor, as its effects will be enormous, potentially changing how developers approach the future development of all larger lots in all of our neighborhoods in Princeton, just as they have in two lots in our own neighborhood in only the last three to six months. Your decision regarding this lot will affect far more people than just those within two hundred feet, and so much more time and energy should have been expended to make sure all the residents of Princeton understood the significance of what you are doing and considering. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wahlberg.
Okay, I just brought over Jeffrey Irving and then we have Tom Judson and Patricia Lothberg.
I think Jeffrey Irving is still in the attendees room. There we go.
If you could raise your right hand?
Mr. Irving, you need to activate your camera.
Here's, well, first of all, do you have audio for me?
Yes, we can, we can hear you. Yep.
I neglected to do this beforehand, but I didn't allow Zoom video before coming here, so if it's okay to proceed without video, I'll ask that leave, otherwise, you'll have to bear with me while I activate my camera.
Um, I'm sorry to put you to the trouble, but we greatly appreciate your activating your camera, if you can do that.
I received word that he declined his invitation.
He was leaving, he was leaving Zoom, so he could re-enter and activate his video when he re-enters.
Got it, thank.
Great.
Thank you, thank you for your patience, I'm sorry about that.
No, thank you for accommodating that video.
If you could raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give will be the truth?
Yes, I swear.
Just want to affirm.
Chair, members of the board, thank you for putting this on and allowing members of the public to speak. I'm a native of Princeton and homeowner in Princeton as well, and I'll echo some of the concerns that my fellow fellow neighbors have raised in opposition to this subdivision variance as well as a setback variance. The precedent that this creates for conforming lots within the city is extremely concerning. So as an initial matter, I oppose the subdivision because it creates that dangerous precedent that the proceeding speaker so eloquently identified, that this will expand for all new developments in aging homes to remove some of the aging homes for a new housing stock that becomes crowded and not in line with the overall theme of the master plan in various neighborhoods across the town, so not just this neighborhood, but others affecting the nature of Princeton itself. As for the setback, it seems like the need for the setback to put the, or to maximize a square footage is purely driven by profit, which should not be a compelling reason to grant that eight-foot setback from the Kyler property line. And I didn't hear any compelling argument from the developer or the applicant for why that specific variance should be granted, other than to increase the square footage of the houses, and in so doing, to increase the cost of each of those individual houses beyond what any reasonable person would call a moderately priced dwelling. I think a more appropriate means to get this, to increase the housing stock would be to allow for a single development without subdivision and approval of a single ADU, which would set, would not create the presidential problem that I indicated in the first portion of my remarks. So in conclusion, again, both reject the or oppose the approval of a subdivision as well as the setback from Kyler. Thank you.
Thank you, Irving.
Okay, the next person is Tom Judson and Patricia Lothberg.
Okay, Mr. Judson was previously sworn.
Hi, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity to be heard. I have a nearby house at 26 Kyler. The most significant decision before the planning board on this application is whether zoning waivers for size that could replace the existing one-story house with four multi-story houses instead of two are justified under current zoning law. It isn't to preserve the status quo of a one-story house or even a choice between one large house or two. As discussed in the April 18th meeting, the planning board cannot condition approval of variances on foregoing ADUs at a later date.
Yeah, my advice to the board is to the contrary. I think they can do that and the applicant has said that they would not, in fact, seek-
Site plans and orders can change. As a result, the question is whether zoning waivers for size that would allow construction of four houses fit the development patterns and character of the neighborhood. The expanded survey area presented tonight doesn't represent the local Kyler, Walnut, Dempsey, Jefferson neighborhood, but a much larger section of Princeton. the local Kyler, Walnut, Dempsey, Jefferson neighborhood, but a much larger section of Princeton. As a basis for waivers, the planning board exhibit as presented at the April eighteenth meeting substantially relies upon undersized lots on Kyler Road approved before the zoning law was changed. Those properties are an important part of this neighborhood, yet the size of each of those lots was approved before the zoning law was amended for the purpose of not having lots smaller than those under the new zoning law. They're generally one-story ranch houses built in the fifties and without ADUs. Using those properties to characterize lots in the neighborhood as undersized for comparable waivers would reset the new zoning law to the old requirements. It would use lots allowed under earlier zoning like a ratchet for current application, for the current application, which would then set a precedent for future applications. In addition, the planning board exhibit states blocks with private deed restrictions on the other side of Kyler Road are the outliers. There is no reason to remove blocks with deed restrictions from neighborhood maps. Instead of outliers, they're part of the neighborhood. Together with many small ranch houses throughout the Kyler, Walnut, Dempsey, Jefferson neighborhood, the deed restricted blocks support a pattern of development of a relatively quiet neighborhood. To limit the rate of change to the pattern of development in our neighborhood and not to establish a precedent that could use requirements from earlier zoning law to set lot sizes, I request that members of the board not grant this application for zoning waivers for size.
Thank you, Mr. Judson.
Okay, the next person is Patricia Lothberg. Um.
And right now, no one else has raised their hand to speak, so now, now someone has, or maybe not. Maybe so, maybe not. Uh, the hand goes up, the hand comes down. So now is the time, if you wish to, uh, address the board, um, to raise your hand. Uh, and after we finish hearing from everyone, um, we will close the meeting to public comment. So who's next, Carrie?
Actually, I'm moving Michael Bell over because, um, Patricia declined.
Uh, well, I saw her. I'm sorry, Justin.
She's in the meeting.
She's in the meeting.
Helping me, I get, I'm mixed up.
Ms. Lothberg's in the meeting and she's ready to speak.
And she.
Okay, great. Ms. Lothberg, if you could unmute yourself. You're still on mute. There we go.
There we go, sorry.
No problem.
Ms. Lothberg had previously been.
Yes.
Okay, go right ahead.
Hi, I'm Patricia Lothberg. I live at seventy-nine Kyler. Um, I'm opposed to this subdivision for the reasons that have been stated by others here this evening, and I just wanted to bring up one, my main concern. Um, um, traffic that will be there if you're adding two houses. It's a busy corner. We have children walking to school, we ride bikes, we walk our dogs. It's a quiet neighborhood which doesn't have sidewalks, and so we, you know, it's, it's busy and we go out to Ky, to Jefferson where there are sidewalks. So to add two houses, which will likely four houses, that to me means four cars or eight cars. And it's already a busy corner. One house with an ADU, AUD would be, would be enough. Um, that's my biggest concern. Thank you.
Okay, okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lothberg. Um. Carrie, are you bringing over Michael Bell?
Uh, yes, I'm so sorry.
You start. There we are.
Yeah, Mr. Bell had previously been sworn in.
Yes, um, I'm not seeing. Oh yes, there we are. Okay, all right. Uh, thank you for allowing me to speak again on this proposal. Um, as you consider this, uh, for a vote, I just ask the board to consider this. The benefit of this subdivision accrues entirely to the developer. Who will be able to create two large and expensive homes on what was previously one house, a lot with one house. The board and the master plan, our new master plan, have lamented the lack of the missing middle, so-called, in Princeton, that there is not a supply of affordable homes for other than very wealthy people. And I would ask the board to consider, does this proposal do anything to address that issue? I believe it will not. Instead, it will create a precedent which will be used to destroy our neighborhood and raise the price of all of the houses that are created. And that's my point. It's all to the developer and not to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Um, any other members of the public wish to address the board? I see no more hands up among the attendees at this time. So seeing none, I will close the, um, public hearing portion of this application and, um, invite, uh, continued discussion and deliberation by the board. Um, although, let's, let's tick off some, as, um, Ms. Sax mentioned early on, there are a number of issues people raised that I definitely want to address. So Mr. Jennings, the next door neighbor, uh, is rightly concerned about very large trees right next to, um, where the driveway is. Um, um, shown on the plan. And, um, so we'd like to hear what you have to say about that and also about grading and, um, stormwater flow, uh, from this property onto his. Um. And, um, yeah, that, let's talk about those things for starters, Mr. Kennedy.
Sure.
And we, his, his other question, his other question, I think, was about, um, the detached garages versus the attached. I mean, I, I'll just say, like, personally, the detached garage is a, is a a feature throughout the former borough that I think, you know, is, is, um, very authentic, but to the point about, you know, optimizing space here, I just would be interested to hear the answer to that.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so I'll, um, invite our engineer, uh, back. Uh, we had, or at least I had started, uh, the same things, um, uh, as, as questions or things to respond to. Um, so Eric, from a stormwater perspective, um, sometimes existing conditions are, are opportunities to make things better. You know, we're essentially required to, under the ordinance, not, um, allow water to sheet flow onto neighboring property. So can you talk a little bit about what we would design, um, how that would be avoided and, and I guess the potential for to ameliorate the existing, if there is an existing problem of flow from this property onto the neighboring property, how that could potentially, um, be ameliorated?
Certainly. Um, so right now, under, under the existing conditions, the area north of the current dwelling as it sits on the property, the ground adjacent to the dwelling is slightly higher than the ground as you go in the northerly direction. That is why surface runoff from this property, some of which presently flows onto the neighboring property. What we're proposing as part of any site plan that gets submitted to the, um, engineering department for building permits is when the property is graded, we cannot continue to direct water onto the neighbor's property. The water has to either remain on our property and flow through our property into the public roadways, or we have to manage it on-site. As I indicated before, this application is going to be subject to the minor stormwater ordinance in Princeton for development, um, that are not classified as a major development. Um, part of what we can do in grading the property and citing the house is to direct stormwater onto the pavement of the driveway and then direct the water along the pavement into the public roadway. Downspouts from the roofs are typically tied into the green infrastructure, be it rain gardens, um, underground infiltration systems in order to manage the runoff from the roof area. And any excess runoff that flows into those, um, stormwater BMPs will then overflow into the public roadway. Essentially, the only area that may flow onto the neighbor's property would be limited to the area adjacent to the existing trees. What we will do is minimize the disturbance to those root zone, and part of that requires no grading, minimal filling, certainly no cutting, that potentially would damage the root zones of the trees. So I do believe as part of the site design, we can grade the site in such a way that we can minimize any stormwater flow onto the neighbor, neighboring property. Definitely, any of the proposed impervious surface will not flow onto the neighbor's property. So I hope, uh, Madam Chair, that answers your question.
Yeah, sorry, I was, I muted myself and, um, uh, y- y- yes and no. I mean, we still, um, it, I, I still have a really powerful concern about the impact of building a driveway next to these, you know, immediately adjacent to these very large trees. Um, it looks to me, you know, based on eyeballing it from walking by and looking at aerials that the root zones um, would go well under the driveway, and I just, you know, have a real concern about that and might, um, argue, uh, as have other factors, uh, for putting the driveway, um, connecting the driveway to, um, Kyler. Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, I just wanted to take, I know this is a little bit repetitive, but since Ms. Sax asked the question about the attached garage, again, I wanted to try and be a little clearer about what the issue is there. A detached garage is an accessory structure. It is allowed to be in the side or rear yard setback. An attached garage is part of the primary structure. And so there are no, there's no relief for where that can go. So essentially, if they attached the garage to the house, they would actually have to push the entire building towards Kyler. Now, that would have a salutary effect, or they either further towards Kyler, which would require more of a front yard variance, or they would have to be into the side yard, which would be a new variance that they're not currently required to have. I don't know if I explained that clearly, if people can nod, if you got it, but I just.
Very clear, David. Very helpful. Thank you.
So, but all of that is to say that, you know, the idea of maybe giving up some of that backyard space um, and keeping the, the driveway off of Kyler for both houses is something that we should strongly encourage, we should condition. I don't, you know, um, I don't want to dictate to the board how we should be responding, but um, you know, one of the, you know, one of the possibilities that I'm considering, you know, is just not granting the front yard setback variance. Right? So I'm going to talk a little bit about the the undersized lot variance and try again to address a little bit of the public objection. I want to make sure that people understand that zoning is not created as an ideal that, you know, universally applies everywhere within each zone. What zoning does when it sets up setbacks and bulk standards and stuff is it tries to approximate what is on the ground existing. So people's, from the public sort of saying, oh, you know, we shouldn't be using the lot sizes that were established before zoning as something to guide our decision-making. There's nothing, I mean, there's nothing purer or more correct about lot sizes that are in the zoning than the lot sizes that existed prior to the zoning. It's just the zoning was trying to create an overall set of rules that would apply well in most of the neighborhoods where the zoning was created. So here, I think it's really true that the zoning numbers just aren't correct for Kyler because virtually every single lot on Kyler is undersized, either for width or for area or for both. And so for us to use the existing lot sizes on Kyler and applying them to this subdivision question, I think is really appropriate. These are lots that are on Kyler. All the other lots that are on Kyler are undersized. It's really de minimis. It's a difference of, you know, point two acres between a quarter acre and point two, three acres. And so I'm inclined to say that granting the undersized lots is fine, but we could not grant the front yard setback, and that would essentially force the developer to make a decision about should I build a smaller house on this lot? Because I can't really do a full size, I can't use the whole floor area and still get a backyard. So what's more important to me? Is it the backyard? Then I shrink the house. Is it the size of the house? Then I give up the backyard, but I don't, i- if we don't grant that front yard variance, then we're forcing the developer to make one of those decisions. Um, to either shrink the house or to, to lose the backyard. Um.
What about the three trees? How, how does that impact the three trees?
The three trees on the neighbors.
Yeah, the trees are between, um.
Large trees. It's really.
They're.
Yeah, yeah, so. So what, what I hope the developer would consider doing is moving the driveway back to Kyler. And then they can move the house away from Kyler. Because the, remember, the driveway being on the north side of the house, that's what's pushing it too close to Kyler. That's what's requiring the front yard variance on Kyler. If they get rid of that driveway, we save the trees. Will reduce, reduce the impervious coverage. They can keep the same size house they have currently, and all they'll lose is some outdoor backyard space. So I, I, I think that's the best solution for the neighbors. I think it's the best solution for the developer. That's sort of what I would encourage the board to seriously consider.
Yeah.
Could we ask the applicant to respond to that?
Brian?
So, um, as, as usual, um, Sean made some excellent points there. Um, I'm not advocating or suggesting that you, that we walk away or that we are walking away from that setback. Um, and we, I do believe we justified it and explained it in a way that is, uh, that this board can approve, but approving it in the way that Sean has, um, suggested does require that trade-off. It's possible that the, the home could be, uh, reconfigured, uh, to work, um, with the drive on that side, but that pushed back the trees being protected in a different designed home. It's also possible that, that reconfiguring it still conditioned on it facing Jefferson, I suppose, uh, but with a different driveway location, um, forced, I suppose, by the lack of that setback variance, um, would result in one of those two situations that I, I believe um, would, in all likelihood, have, you know, meet the goals that, that it sounds like the board is, 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 is looking for. Um, the only caution amongst many that I have, though, is that, you know, we haven't designed it that way, and that I think what Mr. Owen suggested has the most flexibility to make sure that something will work to everyone's satisfaction once we, whether, you know, a combination of moving the driveway, of redesigning the house and, and those, um, options, as long as it meets the core conditions of what we've discussed. Namely, that it, you know, the, the Jefferson setback, uh, the, um, the, uh, home facing, uh, Jefferson with a sidewalk connection to Jefferson. Um, that's, that's, that's what I'm hearing there, and I, I'm, uh, my reaction. That's, that's, that's what I'm hearing there and I, I'm, my reaction is, is more just to make sure that we don't approve something that. Is impossible, then we have to come back, it does sound like there's an option for, for flexibility that would force one of two. Likely good solutions out of that and that namely is pulling things towards Kyler. You know, the driveway and everything with a different designed home or a Kyler driveway in some way that does, has the same. Effect and I don't know which of those two will, will ultimately do it at this point because we haven't designed them that way yet, but. At least. Conditioning or thinking of it that way would, would make sure that there would be some likelihood of an option that, that something would work without us coming back to the board for. Different relief at some point.
Uh, Mr. Taylor and then.
Two, two quick comments, first of all. From the perspective of the public. Just in general, what I'm hearing is a real and honest concern. About preserving the consistency, the feeling, the look of a special neighborhood. Given this discussion and the comments just made. It seems to me David's Cohen's suggestion is very practical. I like it. The second question I have, just to be absolutely sure. There's been so much discussion about the legal implications of being a subdivision. Let's be absolutely sure that we're clear in our own analysis. That we understand the rationale of the applicant's choice of doing a subdivision. Versus the options available.
Well, one. One thing that came up a few times that I think is tangential to. To what you just said, or, or maybe relates directly to what you just said, Jack, is the. Notion that. Allowing these two, the subdivision into two slightly undersized. Lots that are consistent in size with many other lots in the vicinity somehow sets a terrible precedent. I totally disagree with that. And I think that, you know, not only. Is it consistent with, with actions that this board has taken in, in the past? And it is. I, I, I just completely disagree with that premise. And, you know, maybe our, our planner or attorney or other members of the board can. Opine about that, but. You know, while I personally do not find. The rationale for the setback variance that the applicant has given to be persuasive, I do find the. Rational for the subdivision to be persuasive because I think that. Two reasonably sized houses and everybody, you know, can differ on what's a big house and what's a little house and what's affordable and what's not. Is still going to be. Better for the town and more in keeping with the neighborhood. Than a really, really enormous. Five thousand square foot house on that. Or four thousand square foot house and thousand square foot ADU on that property. That's, that's my opinion and I think, like I said, I think the rationale for that is, is strong. Anybody else, Justin, did you want to say something about the, the issue of precedent?
Yeah, uh, well, so I kind of wanted to build off of what David Cohen had said earlier about the zoning and, and the comments coming up about it. Let's just keep in mind that Princeton came first and then zoning. You know, especially these parts of Princeton, not the other way around, the other way around is. You know, Maricopa County, Arizona, or, you know, some of those nice square lots you fly over. So when we talk about zoning in Princeton, there was a lot that existed before, no pun intended. But many things that existed before, including, you know, mostly the center of town. Both the borough and the township areas like this. Then on top of that, we have things that, you know, applications before various boards, zoning board or, or planning board. That have created exceptions to that zoning. On top of that, then we have the things like the private deed restrictions that were mentioned before as well. So all of these things kind of jumble into our built form and, and, you know, the way that Princeton's developed. Over the past, you know, three hundred plus years. So, I mean, that's essentially why we're here today. Or why the planning board and the zoning board exist are, are to allow for exceptions from that zoning, which is, you know, that blunt tool. That has been identified in the past, so then specifically when it comes to, to an application like this one. The, the regulations that go into zoning, some of them are absolute, like the lot minimum size, but others are percentages. So you can't by right have a, a lot that's point two, four acres. But you can have one that's point two, six, and the percentages don't, you know, kind of go with. The size you have, so in a case like this, you know, point four, four acres is almost, but not fully double. The point, uh, point two, five requirement. But the percentage of the structure doesn't change. So that's where we get these tear downs and rebuilds and I know especially that's hit this neighbor, neighborhood, you know. The past at least decade, so that's kind of, you know. Why we're here having this discussion, we have that minimum lot size requirement. We don't have a maximum lot size requirement and we have then percents of, you know. Of whatever the lot size is that the building can be, so to your point, Louise, about what fits more with the neighborhood. Especially one that, you know, was mostly built before the zoning requirements that we have now. In the forties and fifties for this one. There are structures, you, you could see the structures that were built post zoning. You know, since the zoning was added and you could see the structures that were built prior to it. And what we're trying to do here is balance out, you know, what is the feel of that neighborhood? If it, you know, if the variance is based on the applicant's argument better serve. The community and our zoning plan based on the municipal land use law, so I hope that didn't get too wonky. Or too in the weeds, but, you know, that's essentially where the zoning and the variance is fitting.
Thank you. Pallavi Nuka and then Nat Bodigheimer. Pallavi, you're still on mute.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I just wanted to say that I liked. David's comments about shifting the driveways. To be built on Kyler and also the comments about perhaps not granting the. The variance on the setbacks. However, I also had just one point of clarification for the applicant and this is. Returning to an earlier point that was raised about having a shared driveway and attached garage. I didn't quite follow the rationale for why. They need to have separate driveways if, if you are indeed considering putting both driveways on Kyler. Would you consider? Perhaps having one driveway that can access both garages?
So I'll, I'll let the applicant speak a little bit to this, from one perspective. The, the, the shared driveway might seem to give us some additional space, but ultimately with it, with the Jefferson fronting house. Any, whether it's a, an independent Kyler driveway or a shared driveway, we're talking only a, a foot or two. Of, of space because ultimately the parking needs to be on the Jefferson lot. And setback enough with the possible exception, I guess, of if there's a zero lot line. Garage that's permitted, that still needs to be in the usable backyard area of the Jefferson lot rather than a side yard, so. Both of those solutions I think would be explored, you know, along with perhaps. Moving the house a little bit, you know, or redesigning the house and, and pulling things away from the. The other Jefferson neighbor with a Jefferson driveway, but, but ultimately whether it's a shared driveway. Or an independent driveway that's, you know. Close to the property line and just at the, the ordinance distance, we still have that same problem of cutting up. The backyard usable area and have to address it in, in some way with the design of the site, the, the drawbacks are a little. Little less so, I suppose, with the shared driveway, but they're still there, that the, the parking needs to be set back. And you would be in that only kind of usable backyard area and, you know, on top of that, there's some additional. I'll just say traditional kind of neighbor. Issues with, while it's fairly common, it is not always a. Popular item amongst neighbors with the shared driveway arrangement and the, the need to. Now they always say fences make great neighbors, shared driveways do not always make great neighbors, so there is a bit of a downside sometimes. With that arrangement as well, just from a. I'm gonna say popularity perspective or for who would want to. To, to utilize it, so I, I, I believe. And I'll, I'll ask Orr to speak a little bit as well, but. Keeping those options open, ultimately that might be the best thing and perhaps the developer chooses that. Perhaps they choose something else that solves these problems, we just, we just don't really know that, I, I, I don't think that. The shared driveway necessarily solves the problem. Of parking in the only kind of, not the, in the usable. Backyard part of the Jefferson facing house. Because that's where the shared driveway and the parking would be, or, or anything you want to add to that? Still muted.
Okay.
There we go.
The shared driveway creates a problem of the, then you have to create. Joining driveway, who's going to clean driveway, so you have to actually create. Different setbacks, I mean, the. Forms that. Between two neighbors, it can be a problem in the future.
Some kind of an agreement or even a homeowner, so, well, not a homeowner. I, I see what you're saying.
More than that, yeah.
And, and one thing that occurs to me is, and I do think, I do think it's. Would be wise to have both driveways off of Kyler and you can make a bigger backyard by building a smaller house, but. And, and that might be very appealing to people who care more about backyard than about a fifth bedroom, but. If it's a shared driveway, it makes screening between the two dwellings more complicated and. And potentially more difficult and I, and I do think that that should be an important consideration. For, for both households.
I'll also note that the, the common, the predominant pattern of shared driveways in Princeton is to. Front to back homes that are sighted facing the same street, it is much less common, or I, I don't know if I've come across ones. A, a shared driveway with one, you know, a, a side yard situation. Backing up into the more private backyard areas, it's, it's a little bit more challenging. On a, on a corner lot and while perhaps our discussion was, was focused more on the effect on the one home. Madam Chair, you're, you're exactly right, it does limit the screening for, for both properties as well. As, as an option, it may be the best one and maybe what he chooses, but I guess I'll, I'll just continue to, to ask the board to remain. Flexible so that the, the best solution that complies with your other requirements could ultimately be done.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Oh, I'm sorry, did, did you have a follow up question, Pallavi?
If it's, hopefully this would be quick, I'm just wondering if there's any setback requirements for the garages. Do they have to be? Set. Back in the lot as the way they are now.
So, a, a, assuming they are not attached to the home and Mr. Cohen did an excellent job of explaining that earlier. We're looking at five feet from a lot line for either for the. Detached accessory structure like a garage or if a, a non-shared driveway. Three feet, sorry, excuse me, five feet for. For the driveway, a little bit further for parking, if there was a shared driveway, there is a provision that would allow if they're done at the same time. To be a, a, a shared garage or like zero lot line garage that is allowed to be a little closer. But that option would also have the implication of the, you, you'd lose the place where the screening would be. In, in doing that, but it would, it would be five feet, I believe, for both driveway and accessory building. Or if they were, if there was a shared driveway, obviously it's zero because it could straddle the line.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bodigheimer and then Ms. Sax.
I, I, thank you, Madam Chair, I, I guess I wanted to, to, to start, start by saying. How very unsympathetic I am to. Any argument that is premised on greedy developer rhetoric, I just, you know, unless. Anyone here has built their own house with their own hands. They're in a house that was. That was developed by a developer and we owe our housing to the profit motive of that sector. And I don't understand why we, you know, the, this sector gets singled out for. Vilification when, you know, it, it seems to be. Treated differently from every other profit seeking. Part of our society that we. Frankly relish and I'm sure many of the members of the neighborhood profit by. And I would say the second reason is that I'm keenly aware of the fact that since we bought our house here in 2012. The value of our home has practically doubled vastly. The increase in value vastly outstrips the amount of money that we put into the house. And that capital gain is completely undeserved. And results from the systematic structural under provision of housing. In Princeton and in every other community in New Jersey. And the people who benefit from that are us, the people who are fortunate enough to own our homes now and I know. That everyone here thinks about that. And maybe secretly, maybe at their dinner parties talks about the increase of the values of their homes. Maybe we don't talk about it, but we're conscious of it and I, I, I'll look, I'll be honest, I'm pleased by it, but I also know I don't deserve it. And so. A part of our public policy. Is to increase the amount of housing that is available to meet supply and to, that is part, you know, every little bit. Every little bit helps in this regard. And so that is the big reason why. I'm comfortable with the comments that, you know, that David had made and that Chairman, Chairman have made about. Being sympathetic to subdivision, I'm also aware. As somebody who lives next door to two houses that have been tear down and rebuilt and as someone who walks my dog along Grover. Along Harris, in the Littlebrook neighborhood where there are lots of tear downs, I am. Highly sensitive to the, what feels to me like the negative impact of what is allowable by right here. And I'm also unsympathetic to concerns about radical impacts the neighborhood based on the positive feeling that practically everybody in Princeton has about. A street like Jefferson where everybody sends their kids to trick or treat because it's like the ideal neighborhood. And so I just don't understand the hand wringing about the changes in density here, I am completely sympathetic to the. Design issues that we are grappling with that have to do with the. Front yard setback and the location of the garage, the driveway. And the impact of the trees and the stormwater, th- these are all very practical questions, but I mean, I just think that. I just, I just want to say. That we should take the tone of the temperature down a bit and treat this as the practical problem solving exercise that it is. And. You know, consistent with a just. And moderate policy of trying to improve our neighborhoods and that peopling them with people in. Moderately sized houses who are not outrageously rich is probably a good thing. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Nat. Thank you. Mia Sax?
It's really hard to follow that.
It is. I don't envy you.
Especially because I have a, just a very specific. A question and I'm sorry, I'm going back to the three trees. So I am losing the forest for the trees, I apologize, but. So I am losing the forest for the trees. I apologize, but. Is there some way, so if you could just explain to me, you know, I'm sort of agnostic, one driveway, two driveways or whatever. But what needs to be done to ensure that the neighbor? You know, that the stormwater impact of the driveways is not directly dumping into his yard and also that the driveway is not. Impinging on the, you know, the drip line and the roots of the trees and I'm just wondering Louise if maybe we should have one of our. Dan Weissman or one of our, I don't know if he's here, yes, he is here, one of our staff. Comment on this.
Dan?
Absolutely. Thank you, Council President. So prior to any development. If there's anything done on this lot or otherwise, tree protection zones are reviewed by the municipal arborist. That's a requirement for any type of development. And that applies to trees on that lot or not on that lot. So. Before any building permit is signed off, there's a prior approval sheet that requires a signature from multiple departments, one of which is also the municipal arborist and myself. That tree protection will be reviewed. It will be verified and it cannot be removed throughout the duration of the project. So if the applicant or anybody looking to any kind of work. submits a plan that shows tree protection accounting for trees. And we go out there and we realize that tree protection is about fifteen, twenty feet off of where it should be. It's got to be removed and relocated. That's that's the simple fact of it. If it's not in their lot, they they can certainly request from from the adjacent property owner to. Remove the tree. Because it may be impacted by the development, but they can't do that without the approval of of the adjacent lot owner. As to stormwater, Mr. Rupneran's comments are absolutely right. There can be no increase in stormwater running off from a site that will be reviewed by the engineering department, myself specifically. For an engineering site plan application. Prior to any, that happens before zoning permits even issued, so that's even before a building permit is issued. So we have checks in place. What what could be if if this? Application gets there, a condition of approval could be included to. Going back to the the tree protection to meet on site before any major site design happens to verify the location of the tree protection fencing. And have that actually put on the plan that's developed as opposed to a theoretical line that may or may not have to be. Edited or or revised. After the project is designed. I think that would be beneficial here, especially hearing the concerns. And and if the project, if the application gets there, I would request that that be added as a condition of approval.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mia. Were you done?
Well, I I just I just want to say to that, you know, the larger point back to the forest and to. To Nat's point that, you know, having listened to a whole a whole presentation at a state conference recently about the new state plan that's coming forward. You know, what subdivision of large lots, you know, and moving away from the post-war suburban sprawl. Type of development is is coming as a, you know, that this will be a a top recommendation for the state as a whole because we are built out, so. It is, this is not something radical. It is something that's being, you know, recommended in in every planning school and in, you know. You know, right to to the top of the state and in the nation. So in dealing with with. States like New Jersey in particular that are built out, but also. I, you know, we do have an issue with our tree canopy in in Princeton and it is. Being eroded, not. From multifamily where, you know, there were a number of articles about this recently where. There is a a high level of enforcement and a and a tree replacement ratio. It is more in. The single family teardowns that we are losing our tree canopy, and that's why. I'm particularly focused on these trees because I know that we need to build more middle sized housing, but I want to make sure that we're not losing our trees, so. Thank you, Dan, very much for that comprehensive explanation. That's all.
Yeah, thank you. David?
Yes, Dan, turn your camera back on. I just had a clarifying question. So if the driveway. You know, if the applicant comes comes to the conclusion they want to continue with the driveway coming off Jefferson. If the driveway overlaps. The drip line of these trees. Essentially, they wouldn't be allowed to build that plan because the driveway cannot. Or, you know, can't cover the root the root zone. Is that is that a correct statement?
Yes, to an extent. There is a portion of a root zone that that may be. For lack of a better word, I'll say compromised, but they're much smaller diameter roots. And there can be some. Preventative measures that can be done, air spading to excavate around. But really, until you see where where the tree protection zone is, there's a tree protection zone, there's a critical root protection zone. And evaluation would have to be done in the field. So to answer your question. Yes and no.
I'm glad I asked.
Is it, is it? Correct to say that? The safest way to make sure those. The true protection zone and the. Critical tree root zone are not compromised is to simply move the driveway. To the other side of the lot so that it the driveway connects with Kyler and not. And is not built where the where the drawing shows it now. I mean, I. I guess I guess I'm trying to throw a softball, but it seems to me so obvious that, I mean, that driveway is very close to. The lot line. And so are those trees and they're huge and their root zones are huge too. And.
No, you're right. You're absolutely right. I mean, if if that driveway is underneath the drip line of the trees, that's that's the tree protection zone. So just looking at aerials as to where. The drip line of those trees are is is along that lot line. To avoid any impact to any roots of those trees would be to relocate away from that lot line.
Yeah, okay, thanks. Other questions, comments from board members? There were. Few other issues that were raised by members of the public that. I just want to see what I had. I think we've dealt with all of them. I I. Agree with the with what folks have, well. I agree with Dan Weissman, the expert. About the not being concerned that stormwater flow onto the neighboring property is going to be a problem. Because if that problem exists now, it will be addressed by our own ordinance requirements. When and if a house is built there, so. That was the other starred thing I had. Other comments from from board members? Questions, deliberations, thoughts, opinions? I will share my own opinion, which maybe I've already shared, which is that I believe that the. Subdivision. Is reasonable and and that the justification for the variance is a good one or. Multiple good ones. I do not agree with the setback variance and prefer not to grant that personally. And I would hope that we can require that the driveway. That both driveways. Come off of Kyler. And I appreciate, I should would just say, I appreciate the extent to which the applicant has addressed. And tried to address concerns that were raised from the very start. Which in the beginning primarily were very much focused on the home, you know, one of the home on the left. Western more more of the two homes front on. Jefferson, which was a huge concern early on and and the applicant immediately addressed it and has, you know, seemed to be. Wanting to. Address other concerns as well, which I appreciate.
Louise, if you could clarify, are you in favor of granting the front yard? Variance for the Kyler?
I am not in favor of granting the setback variance, no.
I was a little confused, and thank you.
Sorry if I was not clear about that.
If he wanted to make a motion along those lines, Louise, I would be. Interested in seconding it.
Well, typically, as Chair, I don't. Make motions. Would someone else like to make that? To interpret my my ten thirty-five. Into a motion. If not, I would I would be willing to make it myself if nobody else wants to. Okay, I what David, your mouth is.
Yeah, I just want to. Make sure, you know, Jerry's comfortable with the condition. Requiring the driveways both to be off Kyler. I want to check with the applicant, you know, I. I see Ryan shaking his head. I was more inclined to. Give the applicant a little flexibility. I mean, if they can keep the driveway out of the tree protection zone and keep it off of Jefferson, and that's their preference. I think I'd like to allow them to do that.
Is there? Let me then I may have a question either for Dan or for Derek. Is there a distance from the corner that the driveway has to be? In other words, could the driveway be on the other side of the house and not along the lot line? No, because it would be too close to the corner. Yeah. All right.
Correct. You're correct.
Interrupt some.
I'm sorry.
Alvin, did are you, did you have your hand up or? You're muted. I think you were just holding your, okay, got it.
I hope, Alvin, that's not.
I'm struggling a little bit because I'm using my iPad because my computer's not working, so. That's why I see that. So I I'm just trying to make sure I understand a decision I'm going to make if. The variance for this for the front yard setback. Is not granted. Then. At least as as I'm listening to what David is saying, and I think what what Mr. Kennedy has been saying. Is then that that gives some flexibility to the developer to to have to. Decide where 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 they put the driveway. And is that is that further limited by what I what I think? I'm hearing from Mr. Weissman. That there still has to be. The arborist and himself will have to go there to see whether or not, in fact, the trees will be. That will disturb the the drip line of what the trees are. Is that is that have I sort of stated where? You know, a position there and what 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 could happen?
I think the.
See Dave nodding, I see him nodding, so I just want to make sure that that's. That's like, I got it.
I think the question of the front yard setback is independent of the location of the. A driveway on the Jefferson lot.
But David made.
Yeah, so if they want to keep the existing floor plans. And they just have to move the house back from Kyler to meet the setback requirement. They cannot keep the driveway. Where it is. However, if they decide that they're better off redoing the floor plan. So that they can move the front of the house back without moving the back of the house back. Then they could leave the driveway where it is, but as you say, Alvin. Only if it doesn't impact the tree protection zone.
In any way. I mean, that, you know, I. That. Just obviously have a real concern about that and I don't want, I I feel like we should be. Unequivocal about, especially since they do have at the corner lot, they have an alternative. And that if there is any risk to those. Large trees right near the lot line. But on the neighbor's property, if there is any risk associated with the placement of the driveway. Then it should not be built there. And that that's my own opinion, and I don't know whether, you know, I guess I guess that still give them some flexibility if the experts say. You know. We believe there is no risk. I just have a hard time believing that's where they're going to come down because of. Because just eyeballing it, it looks impossible. So my my preference would be to to require a. Just make it simple and require that the driveway be off of Kyler and and then they have to decide whether they. You know, build a slightly smaller house with a bigger. Yard or. You know, sacrifice basically. Almost all the backyard. Freddie Pearl Mutter and then Dan Weissman, and I just want to note that it's ten forty. I really want to finish this tonight, and I also want to try our very best to honor our eleven o'clock. Stop, so let's try to. Wrap things up. Freddie?
And my question really is that actually because, I mean, certainly from an environmental standpoint, I want those trees preserved. But if it turned out that they were able to do that, that it didn't endanger the trees, would they have to come back again for to get the? Setback they want?
No, I don't think that we're contemplating anything that would require that they come back. No, I I think that the condition would be that if they if. That if we're going to give them flexibility. That they could place the driveway connecting to Jefferson in its current configuration. Only if there were. No threat whatsoever to those trees in the. In the judgment of the arborist and. Other professionals, landscape architect. Or or we or I, you know, I think slash hope we can. Make a condition that the driveway come off of Kyler and just do away with that possibility.
That I understand, but if but if we say they can do it, I think it's unlikely. That the arborist would say there's no way this could be protected.
Right.
But if it they did in order to do what they want to do, don't they need the setback?
No, no. I think that the issue of the setback is is separate.
Well, what's the setback for then?
The setback. Variance is for the frontage for the. Frontage on Kyler.
I thought there were two. I thought there was one on Kyler and there was one on.
Jefferson.
No, they they did, they erased that variance with the redesign. The the new design just does not involve a setback variance on facing Jefferson.
Okay. That was my misunderstanding.
Okay, Dan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to clarify one other thing, and I'm not don't remember for on a motion or a suggested motion. If the floor area ratio is going to meet the. Permitted twenty-five percent floor area ratio, or does it include the proportional floor area ratio for substandard lots? Um, and then same thing goes with the maximum permitted impervious coverage. Uh, is it the forty-nine point five percent or is it thirty-six percent for complying lots? Just want to get the clarification on that.
Well, yeah, it's a good thing to clarify as, uh, yeah. I would I would think a condition should be that the, um, they adhere to the twenty-five percent maximum F A R and the lower of the two figures you named for impervious cover.
Thirty-six percent.
Okay.
Okay, let me let me ask this about the thirty-six percent then, because on the in the report, it says, oh, okay. It's thirty-six percent. Okay, that that's fine. They they've agreed that they would comply with both of those, and I think.
Yes.
Conditions.
Yes, they did.
Yeah.
And thank you for that, Mr. Kennedy. Mr. Lesko?
Uh, yes, and similarly, another condition might be that the cor- the proposed corner lot or the new one that's going on the corner uh, would have to the structure would have to front on Jefferson.
Yes.
That's something they've agreed to, but just want to make sure it gets in there.
Freddie Pearl Mutter?
Yeah, just for clarification, because we've gone back and forth with so many different variations. Before we vote on this, can we can someone actually basically say what exactly?
Yes, yes, and, um, uh, so do I hear a motion to approve the subdivision including the minimum lot area variance and not including the prevailing front yard setback variance on proposed lot one point oh one? Um, and with the conditions that Mr. Mueller will articulate.
Yes, you're you hear that motion? Okay.
Who makes that motion?
I'm making that motion.
Thank you, David.
Repeat it so we could hear it again.
The the motion is to approve the subdivision, um, which includes the minimum lot area variance, but not, um, but without the variance for the front yard setback on Kyler for for lot, um, proposed lot one point oh one, the corner lot.
But not require that the, uh, driveway for the corner lot be relocated.
Well, that's one of the conditions that I've that I thought you would, um, articulate.
Yeah, and the board's going to.
And I know that we we can I I would be comfortable with the condition that says they can locate it either place as long as our professionals determine there is no risk whatsoever to the root zones of those large trees. But I would prefer that the condition be that the driveway come off of Kyler. So the board can discuss if we want, but, um.
That seems to me, Louise, to be the only point where I don't, I think, I they that there might not be consensus, uh, everything, and I'm going to go over the conditions as I usually do.
Okay.
But I think maybe a discussion right now, or even just a a a a tentative vote on that question of, do you want the driveway relocated? Or do you want to leave it basically where it has to be relocated only if the professionals decide there is no risk, uh, to the trees? Those are the two choices, and maybe I we can get I can get a sense of the board. Maybe you can pull.
So would board members raise your hand if you prefer uh, no risk whatsoever to the trees, therefore require that the drive come off of driveway come off of Kyler?
As opposed to it has to come off of Kyler only if the professionals, um, decide there is, uh, there there is.
I thought that's what I.
Okay.
Not quite. Not 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 quite.
Okay, so so I'll make it more simple. Raise your hand if you if you believe we should require the driveway to be on Kyler.
Yes.
Period. End of story.
Right.
One, two, three, four. Okay, that is not a forum. Not a not a majority. So we'll, um, uh, so the condition will will give some flexibility, but still should be completely clear about no risk to the root zone. So hopefully it will.
I I I'll just say, you know, I really do trust our professionals and.
Yeah, yeah.
And and I I my concern is that there's only there are only so many unintended consequences that that we can consider with within the framework of one meeting, and sometimes in restricting one thing or imposing one condition, uh, we then end up with the unintended consequence of, you know, losing out on with something else, which is equally important that we haven't thought about tonight. And so that would just be my rationale for wanting to have slight allow slightly more flexibility.
That's a very fair point. Thank you. So what are the other conditions, Mr. Mueller?
Okay, so we minus subdivision approval before not the front yard variance and following conditions. I'm going to first start with, as I usually do with my notes, and then I'll shift to the, um, uh, to the to the to the memos. Okay. Plant tree, uh, street trees on Jefferson. Storm water will not flow into neighboring properties. And it has to be the whole plan has to be approved by by Dan. Man, I I think those are whoops. Yeah, there was those are at our ordinance. Jerry, I'm not sure we need. Okay. Especially in a stormwater. Yeah.
Yeah. I agree with that.
Any others, Dave? David, do you?
Well, yeah, I mean, the ones that, um, staff are identifying the twenty-five percent F A R that they do not get, uh, F A R, undersized lot F A R bonus and the thirty-six percent impervious limit, which.
Yeah, those are those are conditions that I was going to. Uh, yeah. Okay, what about the street trees on Jefferson?
I I think that's I I like that.
Yeah, okay. Corner lot has to front Jefferson. Uh, not the corner lot, the corner house.
The house has to front Jefferson, right?
Yeah, yeah. Then we talked about the, uh, the driveway. It will be relocated unless the municipal professionals decide there is no risk to the tree roots. Okay. Um, I know, uh, Justin had indicated, and I'm not exactly sure what the conditions on the ground are. This is his last point on page two of his memo. The applicant, um, should, well, he said, may wish to extend the sidewalk from the existing ones on Jefferson along both proposed lots on Kyler. I guess.
We talked about that early on, since there are no other sidewalks on Kyler, and since it's not part of our sidewalk plan, I don't think that we should require sidewalks along Kyler.
That's fine. Okay, okay, that's fine. And then there are a series of kind of technical stuff in the memo from, uh, Dan and Derek. Um, updating the zoning table, uh, and this is staff comments on his last page. Application should coordinate with the engineering department to revise, uh, lot addresses, tree survey and tree replacement. An engineering site plan, uh, review application, zoning permit, permit to speed files for each lot, uh, title blocks. Now, it said, Dan suggests a floor area calculus for the dwelling on Kyler will need to include the proposed attached garage. Then, uh, a pin pins to be located, legal descriptions, uh, subdivision plan provided, um, to the engineering department, digital digital form, uh, D documents approved by by me before filing with the Mercer County Planning Board. And submission to the Mercer County Planning Board. What about the question? I guess it's the only other one. They said they're just going to build two houses. Um, they're not going to build any ADUs. Do we want to require that? We can do that if we want, but we don't have to. We're going to limit the square footage. Go ahead, Louise.
Sorry, Jerry, to put to.
No, no, no.
Cut you off, um. One precedent I don't want to set is to suggest that we should not permit ADUs.
Okay.
So I mean, because I think that would just fly in the face of municipal policy and smart planning. So I I trust that the that the applicant is going to do what they say, and they're planning to build um, two houses, uh, and but I I I would not want to put a condition in there that says they cannot at any point consider a design that includes an, uh, an A D U if as long as they comply with these twenty-five percent maximum F A R and the impervious cover limit. David, do you have a comment?
Yeah, just to give a little bit of comfort to the neighbors who sort of are is inclined to limit the unit, you know, the dwelling units to two, just to emphasize that if the applicant wanted to do ADUs, they would have to come back for a full-blown site plan, which they do not want to do. I promise you. So I agree with you, Louise. Let's not put it in as a condition, but the the neighbors don't just have to rely on the word of the developer when they say they're going to build two units and that's it. Um, there's really a very, very strong incentive for them not to do. Plus, plus, they're filling up the lots the way it is. So
Yeah.
They don't they don't have any square footage left over for ADUs.
Thanks. Thank you, David.
Yeah. So that that's it with the conditions. Yeah.
So was moved by Mr. Cohen. Was it seconded by, uh, council presidents?
No, go ahead.
Seconded by by Alvin McGowan, um, uh, Carrie Phillip, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bodigheimer?
Yes.
Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Nuka?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ms. Pearl Mutter?
Yes.
Ms. Sacks?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you all. Um, and I want to thank the the neighbors as well. Um, nineteen people still watching, but, uh, people are dropping off as I speak. Um, anyway, it was a a good conversation and, um, a lot of important considerations, and now it's ten fifty-nine. Um, David?
I moved to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Bodigheimer and me and Julie, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Uh, thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Thank you, Mr. Kaitzmas. I hope I did not mangle your name. Um, appreciate, um, your, uh, patience with all of this and all of the things that you did to improve this plan.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You did and will do. Okay. Good night, everybody. See you, uh, July eleventh.
Good night.
Good night.